I would like to call to order the March 21st Board of Selectmen meeting agenda. And first, I would like to have us all rise and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, America, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
You, and I think we're going to wait until later to call FinCom to order. Is that?
You're running, you're running the agenda.
Yeah.
And that's right. I posted for eight o'clock.
For eight, okay. Perfect. Just wanted to make sure. Great. All right. So first up on the agenda, we have the special municipal employee designation. Town moderator. Want to screw that?
So the board may recall, we've been doing this a couple of times over the past year. Under Mass General Law, you can't have two compensated positions unless you are designated a position designated a special municipal employee. As the board may also know, we've been looking to hire van drivers. We found one in the form of our town moderator. So he did reach out to the State Ethics Commission to identify how we can have two different roles. And what they recommended was that the town moderator position be identified as special municipal employee so that we can identify that he falls within that category than to have the position of van driver as well as town moderator.
Any questions?
No.
I think it's noteworthy to just mention to the folks at home that the moderator's position is a stipend position. I believe it's $500 a year. So there's no great, obviously, there's no financial conflict and no financial gain. And I'm assuming that van driver would be a part-time position?
Correct.
Okay. Part-time position with the town.
Yep.
Okay. That's it? I really have no objections?
No. Same here. I'm glad that he's willing to drive. It should be fun for him and everyone involved. So that's great.
Shall I make a motion?
Please do, sir.
We do need another driver.
I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the town manager to sign into a disclosure by municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract as required by Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, by designating the town moderator and members of the Upton Historical Commission as special municipal employees and to allow David Labor, an existing employee, to take a second position with the town as a driver for the Elder and Social Services Department.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried by unanimous action. Thank you. Next up, we have the emergency repair of the fire station HVAC system.
If it would be okay, would the board like to sort of put that last, waiting for Chief Bradley to join us? He says he'll be on in a minute.
No worries.
So.
Agricultural preservation restriction?
Sure. So working with William Taylor, we are finalizing the paperwork that's necessary for the agricultural preservation restriction that the state and the town is going to have on the Maloney and Lindquist land. There's a document that the state is looking for that town manager has the ability to represent the town in this contract. Because town manager can only sign contracts $25,000 and below, even though this is sort of a donation and the town's portion is less, we figured that would be just safest so we don't run into any issues to have the board authorize me to sign the relevant documents associated with the acquisition of that preservation restriction, just to cover it, not knowing exactly what the final value is. That will allow us to finalize that agricultural preservation restriction and finalize things with Mass Department of Agricultural Resources.
Do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Yeah. Yeah. This is a continuation of a longstanding request. So this is great. Yep.
Yeah, I think this process has probably been eight to 10 months in the making.
Yeah.
So these are just the final steps?
Yeah.
For folks that are listening at home.
Yeah. Yeah. And for folks that are listening, it's Townline Dairy Farm up off of Williams Street. They've got a large parcel of land there that they're putting into an agricultural restriction to preserve it as a working family farm in perpetuity.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the town manager to sign documents relating to the acquisition of an agricultural preservation restriction from Carol Maloney and Johnny Lindquist, the land on Williams Street by the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources and the town of Upton.
I would second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action. Thank you. Do we want to go to the Pratt and Milpon Water Quality Study?
Or Chief Bradley is on if one does.
Okay. How you doing, chief?
Good. How are you?
Good, good, good.
Sorry, I delayed you. I got tied up for a minute.
No, no worries at all. We're here now for you.
Okay. Regarding the heating system at the fire department, with the extreme cold weather we had back on February 4th, we had a failure of the system causing the vent to stay open in the boiler room, which froze up the water supply and a couple of the pumps. So we had a repair of the water supply and three of the pumps were found to have issues shortly after the frozen water supply. And then over the past month, the other three pumps have had significant problems. It's a forced hot water system combined with the HVAC system AC system, and it operates with two large pumps, two medium pumps and two small pumps that also operate the radiant heat for the bay area, the garage area. So right now, we're down to just the radiant heat. Fortunately, it is not too cold at the time, at current time, and we're able to keep the building probably about 60 degrees. But if it does get any colder, we would have to bring in temporary heat. So we're looking to complete this emergency repair. The town's insurance company did set an adjuster in, and he has indicated that the insurance company will cover all six pumps in the frozen supply side of the system. And we're hoping to get this repair done over the next couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you. Any questions?
No. The only question I have is that oil-fired or gas-fired system in the building?
It is a gas-fired system, but it uses multiple boilers that cycle through the system.
All right. I have nothing else.
Okay. Do we need a motion for this, even though it's going through the insurance, right?
If, if we, it's safer to have the motion if it's a direct pay situation, then we don't even need a contract. But if it isn't, and we have to then sort of manage that, then we need a contract because it's going to be over $25,000.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Foods and suppliers.
There you go. All right. Here we go.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the town manager to sign contract documents relating to the repair of the fire station HVAC system.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action. Thank you. Now we can talk about Pratt and Milpon Water Quality Study Contract Authorization.
So you all may recall Special Town Meeting 2022, there was an article from Lakes and Ponds for water quality sediment study and plans. That was approved. It was modified from the original article on Town Meeting floor to fund a initial phase, and the value of that was, that approval was $50,000. I have been working with Mike Penko, and last week, the Lakes and Pond Committee reviewed the RFQ for selecting a consultant to do this initial stage. Trying to pull up the right document. And during their meeting, they voted to recommend to the town manager to engage the services of TRC. They're out of Waltham to do the work for that initial stage. Within the board's packet is the scope of work that they would be responsible for doing. Because I was finalizing the town manager budget recommendation, I didn't have a chance to finalize the contract. The contract would utilize our standard language that KMP had reviewed and reference the scope of work that you have in your packet. So what I'd be requesting is authorization to execute that contract in the amount of $9,000, $39,900 with TRC so that we can try to get that work started before.
You said TRC is the company?
Correct.
Okay. $39,000 is the amount.
Mm-hmm.
And our article is, we had passed what's $40,000, so we're fine.
Yep. So Lakes and Ponds will oversee the work that this consultant will be doing.
And I assume that the folks are comfortable with what they got back, the scope of work and all of that, sort of the experts on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Soon to be experts, right?
Soon to be experts. Well, I think they're certainly more expert than I am.
When you read the language of the contract, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of chemistry work in there. So it would be interesting to see how, you know, how the water quality stacks up and what will necessitate, you know, the correct correction part.
Yeah.
Do we know when they'll be beginning that project?
I know in talking to Mike and, because he is on the call, that they want to execute that beginning of April so that we can start that work right away. There was a timeline of sampling that was going to be done middle to late April and through May that was really required. And that's one of the reasons why we're trying to sort of push this through and get this taken care of so we can do those, do that sampling in the right season for water quality.
Great. Any other questions?
I have none.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you. I'll take a motion.
I move that the Board vote to authorize the town manager to sign contractual documents associated with the hiring of a consultant to perform the Pratt and Milpon Water Quality and Sediment Study.
I would second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action. And we can hand it over to you, Joe. Five minutes ahead of schedule.
Okay. So for the board as well, for everyone that's here, let me make sure I just pull up what I want to inform the board and the community about a number of things that, some of which have been ongoing. First, and this has all been uploaded onto, on the town manager webpage under Town Reports and Updates. So this information from this report, as well as March 7th report and earlier reports are available for everyone to take a look at. So staff has continued to do work with Civic Plus on town website redesign. We recently met to review and identify preferred design elements, page layout, color schemes. Next step is approval of layout and color templates to allow them to develop mock pages for us to then review and sign off. This is a project that is on track for launching end of June 2023. Continuing with our lack of, or our bad luck associated with facilities, we are moving forward with the town hall bathrooms. At the board's last meeting, with the finance committee approved reserve fund transfer request in the amount of $13,000 to start that repair. First part has been completed, which is polishing the wastewater lines. Next step is we're awaiting delivery of the replacement toilets. Those should stock March 27th for them to start that work. We are hopeful that we can have it done in that week. It's not a lot of work, but we're hoping that come April 1st, it can be completed and we can start to open town hall back up to outside groups. I know we're now coming out of winter when everyone was experiencing high electric bills. People have been calling about the electrical aggregation plan and where we are. At the last meeting, I gave an update, but there really wasn't any positive movement, at least now with an email that I received today from Department of Public Utilities requesting information. At least we know they're looking at our application. Colonial Power is in the process of collecting those documents and information that Department of Public Utilities requested and will, once they provide it to me to review, they'll send it off to DPU for satisfying their request. Colonial does not have a timeline what that means for approval, so it's still going to be DPU C. Excise tax bills are due next week, March 27th. For people that may have seen outside of Resteen, the handicap ramp is partially installed. This Friday, they'll be completing installation, including securing it to the ground and making sure that it works properly. Yesterday, I had a contractor out to review the installation of the handicap access button, not only outside, but then also inside. And DPW director is working with his engineer to develop a parking layout plan for restriping the parking lot, including identifying handicap parking spaces. With that same contractor that was with me at Resteen, we also went around to the police station, fire station, town hall to review the improvements that are being funded through the Mass Office of Disability Grant. That grant will cover repairs to the police station, front doors, new door opening mechanisms, installation of access buttons. At town hall, they're going to adjust some of our doors, replace a non-function handicap access button. And at the fire station, they're going to install door mechanisms and handicap access buttons as well. The company that did the ramp is going to provide a quote for replacing the ramp that is at the trailer at the DPW so we can start that project as well. Lastly, on Thursday, March 16th, the Housing Production Plan Steering Committee held a public forum to solicit public input on, from the community to support the development of the Housing Production Plan Update. If anyone would like to see the video, you can go to YouTube and, well, actually, you can go to the front page of town website. Top right corner is a YouTube icon. You can select that. That brings YouTube channel, and it's the second available video. So see what were raised as public comments. That's a process that we hope to have wrapped up and completed with a housing production plan sometime end of June is sort of the timeline we're looking at. Could go into July, but it will be done relatively short.
Very good.
Good?
Questions? I have none.
Good. Good stuff. I love all the updates. I love that it's also available online for people to read. I think it's real helpful for people that are interested in all that's going on. So that's great. Thank you. Now is the time in the agenda for any public input or discussion. Anyone on the phone have any comments or questions? Hearing none. Next on the agenda, we have the appointment of the tenant seat for the Upton Housing Authority. So we're in receipt of five applications for this seat. And the board's job is to appoint the resident tenant seat. So there's, you know, different seats for different reasons. There's one that's open that is required to be a tenant from the Coach Road Apartments. So I think some folks are here. We have the five applications. So we'll review, discuss those and go through that process. Is, was it Brett? Is he here? Is he on? Oh, okay. Great. Yeah. I don't know if there's anything you want to sort of add or set up or?
No, it's just you guys got to go with the applications and then.
Okay. Yep. Super. Great. So if, if I've read through all of them, I don't know, do you want to have people sort of that are here share their intent or objective? And yeah, these people came. So why don't we go through who is here that is interested?
I think, I think it's important to note that most of the times when we have an open seat, it's very rare that we have more than two people that apply for an open seat.
Yeah.
So, you know, unfortunately, we're going to extend our condolences because four people are going to be upset with whatever decision we make. So. But yeah, I think that'd be great if we start.
Great.
Introduce yourself and give us maybe a couple of minute introduction of what your thoughts are.
Is, I'll just go down the list in the order that I have them is Mr. Provost here.
Good to meet you.
Please. Hi.
Good to meet you. My name is Richard Del Provost. I'm from, you have read it on my resume as I've written it. I've been living in the town of Upton for 14 years. I've served many committees, received many awards along the years that I've been here. The Coach House Road, been there 12 years. My thought is that where we live, I like to improve the safety of our community, the seniors that will live at Coach House Road for many reasons, that we have a crosswalk across in front of Coach House Road is becoming really messy. Last year or the year before, there was a lady that lived next to me, and she was run down by a car in the crosswalk. This is an ongoing situation. As you can see, I've been this. So I would like to see and contribute to a better life, a better living where we are and have more functions taking place where we are and involve the community as one instead of society.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Hi. My name is Charlene Williams. I'm a fairly new resident. I've been there about a year and a half, and I am interested in the community and would like to find out more about it and find out what I could do as part of the community. I know I've seen a lot of things, but everybody has a varying opinion. So I'd like to find out what more people want and try to please the people.
Thank you. Ms. Squadrill?
Yes. My name is Edie Squadrillie, and I've been living at Coach Roads for eight years, and I've been involved with Coach Roads. I was a member of the CRTA. In fact, I was vice president with my husband. I worked with Linda and Betty. We used to have a lot of events, and I like to see that, you know, happen again. It used to be a very vibrant or to me, more vibrant community, and I like to bring that back. Because of COVID, everything kind of went down, but it's always good to have a lot of discussion about what can be done, what should be done, and welcome everybody. I like to be a part of that. I have time on my hands.
Thank you. Mr. Negrotti?
Yes. My name is Damon Negrotti, and I've been at Coach Road for three or four years now. Just tell you about my education. I have a degree in off-family dispensing, bachelor's degree in chemistry, and PhD in chemistry from Syracuse University. And I really just agree with everybody here, what they're saying. The safety issue was very, very important. I almost got run over last week by that car because those lights are not bright enough. Also, I'd like to bring the community together to have it to be, instead of being isolated, let's all get together and let's make some positive changes in the buildings and in the community.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
He doesn't have a car.
Okay. It's here. Just, I don't know. I mean, we do have a phone number. I don't know if Mr. Collins is, has dialed in. Mr. Collins, are you on our Zoom call?
Can we scroll, scroll maybe on the right side? Wait for any of those or?
Yeah, it would just be that. Yeah, it would be, it would just be this. All right. So any discussions, thoughts, questions?
I guess questions. I see a couple of people concerned about safety. It sounds like maybe some extra, I guess, entertainment thoughts as far as where the board could go or where the community could go. So I guess I would say, other than what you've already mentioned, what else do you see as a challenge to the Coach Road Apartments? So I don't know if you want to just go in order?
I should, like I said, I've been there all these years and I've seen, and we used to have a lot of participation at one time in our first meeting. We used to have a yard sale. We had cookouts. We had gatherings with the residents. Then it was all stopped. I would like to see that take place again within the community. I think that was enjoyable. A lot of people took place, that's a part of it. Make goods, cook goods, and it was all to get together for a weekend. It was nice. It was a lot of fun. And that took place around the 4th of July weekend and then holiday. It was, we had Halloween, and the kids came around for treatment. That is gone. We don't have it anymore. There's a lot of us that lived there, had grandchildren, and we know kids that like to come into the Coach Road for treatment. It's nice. It's a, it's a safe area to be. The other thing I have, and I mentioned earlier, was the concerns with that crosswalk. That crosswalk right now, as it sits, is, it's not safe by any means. I've heard a lot of complaints from the residents talking about, and the concerns I share with them. Instead of a yellow blinking light, I think it should be a red light because at night, when it's busy, traffic just goes racing through. Many times, I stand up in a crosswalk trying to cross the other side of the street and wasn't able to do it.
And I take it that's the same crosswalk, the one that's directly in front of the building?
Yes.
Just, yeah, just completed, right? It was just part of the TIP project.
Right.
As I said, I'm a fairly new resident, and I'd like to get to know the people and find out what the people want and find out exactly if they want a lot of activity, a little activity, because they, people change on a regular basis here. So you have to really get to know the people. I have a degree in education, and I think I've got a lot of experience as far as tasks that people can do and jobs that people can do. And I think, to me, that's the most important thing is making it a community first and then developing what we want to do there.
The community center is open down there too, isn't it? The community center, the community, the housing thing is there, right? Is that used at all?
No. Very rarely. I mean, once in a while there's a meeting, but it's not used. I think the pandemic had an awful lot to do with this, probably. So it's just like starting from scratch. You have to start and build. And I think getting to know the people, I'm surprised, I've lived there almost two years, and the only people I know, and I don't even know that my name, are the people around me. Everybody says hi, but no one is really conversing with anybody, you know? And I think there's an awful lot of nice people there, and I think they'd like to know what they can do. And I think they should be the ones that make the decision.
Any other, any other thoughts or?
I didn't agree with what she's saying. I mean, about the safety issue, I don't cross there, so I really can't answer. But we did have a community that was very vibrant. We had a big Christmas party every year, and we would invite everybody in the community. It was open invitation. We had dinners. Hopefully, I have some of the menus from, from the last time we made it in with Linda. We had barbecues. We have a singer on premise, his name is Johnny Diamond. He has sung at our, our events. I mean, I feel that aging and, and the coronavirus kind of impacted sort of, so everybody went off in their whole little, a kookoo, sort of, to everybody to contribute. And me and Betty were in the box because we wanted to get everything we buy realized, but then everything always falls because, you know, people have bad lives and my grandchildren, they moved away so they, but me and Linda were always doing things, always doing things. And out of our own pocket, and we would charge like nominal fees, like to, like offset, like the barbecue thing, or they could bring in a dish. So I see that. We used to, I used to have staff. We used to, I used to have staff say movies at least once a month with the current movies based on what I thought they wanted. I also used to ask them what they would like to see, like, let's say a book club, let's say it would be a movie, they'd love it, a Tom Brady would be something like that, like, so I used to do those kinds of things.
Great, thank you.
It fell on the ways that I tore apart.
Mr. Negrotti, anything you'd add?
I agree with what everyone has said so far. I mean, the safety issue is definitely something that needs to be addressed, but also I think, like for example, we have problems with our washing machines. They break down continually and I'd like to see something done about that as well. I do like the idea of everybody coming together as community, having more functions. We had one function since I've been here in the four years and that was nice, but we didn't, I haven't seen another function take place since then. And that's really.
Thank you.
Well, can I say something? Having a function in the community room or in the community, it takes anybody to come in and have an idea and a suggestion. You don't need to go to Betty or, or to Brett. We get together, this is what we like done and we respect it. I mean, that's how I ran, like when I worked.
Great.
So that's it. It takes everybody collectively to contribute.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The purpose of the board is budgets, policies and any regulations we need to do. So what, the point, the purpose of office is, I understand your residence and I understand like you want gatherings, you want that, but what can you contribute to the board's work? What can you contribute to the housing board? Because the board will not decide on gatherings and all that. It's policy, budgets and regulations. So with the purpose of figuring out who can contribute to that purpose. That's the purpose of the board.
Great. Thank you.
Well, I know that, if I look.
Oh, hang on, just a second, just a second. Thanks. Go ahead.
And adding to that, my husband and I have had a business all our lives, we've run a business. So we had a great deal, it didn't, you know, we do about, about money and a lot of other things, hiring people and so forth and so on. And I think that is a, an unusual thing, people are here and having that. But it's, it's a very, very good idea to start thinking about that, what you said, who's going to do the line, what's going to be?
Yeah.
And I think that's probably the idea.
Go ahead.
What I was going to say is if you have a concern about safety, you start a petition and we can take it to the lobby channels. I frankly don't post a match week, so if I was, I was never aware. I do go to the post office and stuff, but if you have a concern about safety, you should say, you should do something about it. That's what petition means now.
Go ahead.
I'm Brandy Capistrano. I'm the governor appointee on the board of the Upton Housing Authority. They're talking about safety and I know that, I know that street is busy, but it's more state than, than the housing, that really it's more safer, like perhaps. Right?
That section is more state project, that section of streets.
Right, project, sorry.
It is.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And I do understand where the, but to be on the board, what little time I've been on the board, it's been really good. It's been very fulfilling and I'm learning about numbers and money, where, where money goes and, and things like that. And it's been really nice, you know, and don't talk about different things and whatnot and stuff, but you know, and just to vote on, you know, talk about different things with, with everything going on and a lot of repairs and stuff like that, you know? So that was, it's been really good.
Any other questions? I have not, all right. What are your thoughts, reflections, nominations?
I'd like to nominate Charlene Williams.
I'll second that.
I'm just going to nominate Richard Provost.
So we have a motion in the second for Charlene and it sounds like we have a motion for Richard. Do we have a second? Okay. So we will vote on the motion to appoint Charlene Williams to the tenant position on the Upton Housing Authority. All those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries by unanimous action. Congratulations, Charlene. Thank you. To everyone else, we know that you can all coordinate and do lots of great work on all of the things and opportunities and gatherings and events and safety. So it sounds like you've got a lot of energy and enthusiasm. So I encourage you all to work together to, to make life better for everyone in the, in the community. So thank you for your time and interest. Thank you.
Yep. Yep, thanks for everyone coming out.
Okay. Great. Next item on the agenda. We will, well, we're a little ahead of schedule here, Mr. Flaherty. Do you want us to go through some of the later things or how do we?
Don't leave myself and Mr. McGuire now.
Just give it a minute and then figure out a plan.
You better give it 20, you better give it 20 minutes because we're not holding it later.
No, I know, I know.
To be rude and not sit through the rest of your meeting.
Oh, please, no.
Sorry.
All right, wait, I understand. But you're not the first.
It's going to be a long haul from here.
Evening, gentlemen.
Richard, fire.
So we would be able to take care of some other business such as under board's like that discussion, discussion of Upton Community Center dedication, something that Sandy's been working on, reopening the town meeting warrant for that article that, for addressing the deficit with Board of Health. We also have meeting minutes as well that we can sort of take off and.
Yeah, so why don't, why don't we start bottom up? So we have the executive, executive session minutes. Did you, did those get sent out?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have those. We have the regular session minutes from the 16th, 21st, 7th and 17th. Any questions or input on any of those?
Want to start with the executive session meeting minutes?
Yes.
They look good to me, so.
Yeah, they look good to me too.
Good with you, Morn?
Pretty simple.
Yeah, so I can motion that if you'd like.
Yes.
Please, great.
Okay. I would make a motion that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the executive session meeting minutes for February 16th and March 7th, 2023.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action. Regular session meeting minutes. This is the 16th, 21st, 7th and 17th?
17th, we can cross out because we canceled that meeting.
All right, yeah, I think it's, yes.
16th, 21st and 7th. Okay, so this agenda is.
16th, 21st and 7th.
All right. And was the executive session, was that the 17th or the 21st? Because the agenda says the 21st, but we motioned 17th, but.
It was the 21st.
It's the 21st, okay. Just want to make sure. Okay.
So I think after February 21st and after March 7th, we had executive session afterwards.
Yeah. All right, so then we're at 16, 21 and 7.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes of the 16th, the 21st and the 7th of March, 16th of February, 21st of February, 7th of March.
You got it.
Would second the motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action. And why don't we talk about the, actually, let's do this. Is anyone here from the men's club? I know we're not on until 8:45, so they maybe would be joining later. But if they're here, I wanted to let them talk and then they, but they're not, okay.
Your efficiency tonight is.
It's, 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 it's how we roll. All right, so why don't we do the Upton Community Center dedication ceremony? Is that you, Sandy?
Yeah, just, just wanted to start it off by, the date is, it goes by the, the community, the building committee.
Community Center Building Committee.
Building Committee, yeah, for June 14th. Just really wanted to know what time, would just really like to start with saving the dates to go out to certain dignitaries and also tendencies that would be on the program. So really, what is your desire for time window? Morning, afternoon or evening?
Today of the week is that? Okay. Got to think it over that. You said the 14th?
June 14th.
It's the anniversary day of the town's. We picked it, we did that specifically for that reason.
I feel like more people would show up if we did it on a weekend.
What?
On, on a weekend, the days in between Friday and Monday.
It's town's birthday.
Dedication plaque has June 14th on it. The manager and I, we had talked about this early on, okay, that, that was the date everybody.
It was May 1st, last I heard.
That was when we were going to be doing essentially a.
So this, so this is the dedication, well, like, is this like the ribbon cutting?
Yes.
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 Be the fourth.
Like for all the officials and stuff. We had, when we had reviewed the names and the dedication plaque, this was back in January, I think, that's when we had reviewed with the board, having that on the town's birthday of June 14th.
The dedication plaque during the date of June 14th is already in production.
But we, we weren't invited to that discussion.
Okay, so why don't we ask the people that planned it what time they want to have it? Why, why give up?
May.
You, you could just tell us what time you want to have it. I've got it here, my calendar is up. June 14th. What do you want to do?
The issue becomes, the issue becomes, we don't have it inside or outside.
Okay.
There is a load, the large program room has a load of 95 people.
Okay.
The small clip, small room, small meeting room that is contiguous to it, that's separated by a petition, has a load of 14 people.
Yeah.
So you got a load of 100 there. We're still working on what the load is for the main, for the main library area. Okay? So my two cents would be to have it outside because we have no idea how many people there are going to be. I was, I don't know how many of you were here the night we did the dedication of the rededication of the town hall. There are a lot of people here. There are a lot of people here.
I'm in June 2014 and that was held in the evening.
Right.
The only thing, if it's held outside, I think we have to, how about, do we need a rain date or a tent?
That's.
I mean, that's something to be considered too.
I understand. I, I understand. But I, I just bring it up because I happened to be there yesterday with the building department and we received a temporary certificate of occupancy for today, just so we can move, the library can move stuff in. But there is, there's going to be, there may be an issue of capacity.
Okay, so we want to plan it outside. What time of day do we want to plan it for?
I would, I would say 6 o'clock, 6:30, somewhere in there.
6:30, 6 o'clock, 6 o'clock good? 6:30 is probably better. 6:30, okay?
Well, going through that scenario, right, the building's going to be in operation. So I think you're right, having it outside is probably going to make more sense. And then the other question is June 14th, right, we're into summer. So you would think it's going to be a warm day. So perhaps, as you mentioned, maybe 6:30 works better than 6?
Yeah.
From a temperature standpoint.
And Steve, you got to figure too that, I mean, you go to the capital and you go to think of, where's the orientation of the sun? The sun is.
Setting in the west.
The best sun at 6 o'clock than there is at noon time or, or something like that. Now granted, you wouldn't do it during the week.
Yeah.
That, but it's going to be racked and I have some thoughts on it. And the building committee has some thoughts on it and.
On what?
On program and the dedication ceremony.
Oh, yeah, great.
And we will, you know, work with Sandy to.
Okay.
And what, bring them together.
Okay.
Good, good.
Great. All right, let us know if you need anything from us.
And I mean, at least one of the things is that the, the library will pretty much be nearly open for almost a month. So, yeah, if we were just opening that week, I think we'd be dealing with something turn as far as crowds. So these are going to be people that are really just more celebrating it rather than people that get to see it for the first time. So I, well, I'd expect a large crowd. I don't think we're pushing over, over 100 or, or 10.
I was surprised by the number of people were there in December. And that was a, that was, that was a chilly day, December 12th.
We did have a, a large crowd for the 2014 rededication, very large.
Well, I'm, I'm, what I'm talking about is the groundbreaking.
What is the first day that it's going to be open to the public?
Uh, right now it's shooting for May 1st.
That's, that's, I think it's May 2nd.
Yeah, May 2nd.
So May 2nd is going to be the day that, okay, so if I want to go the day that it opens and I'm going to show up on May 2nd to go. Okay. Let us know if you need anything from us.
The playground was also involved in this process.
Opening May 2nd as well? Great.
We've had, we've had difficulty, it's still on, it's still construction area and we have had difficulty keeping people out of areas, particularly on, on cold days.
Yeah.
Gate is not viable by design. The, the gate itself is supposed to be put in today, but there was an issue, so.
Yeah.
We're, we're working on bringing a, we're having to work out a lot on something.
Yeah.
So the playground sign over there that says closed is probably not worth the material written on at this point as far as being effective.
Fair enough.
I think, I would say, let me just say this about that, just that we feel like we have a seat at the table. We might just want to, as you noted, you know, as you noted, right, the 14th was kind of out of our pick. So I think the only thing that we may want to at least give some sort of an opinion on is what happens if it's a rain day? If it's a hard rain day or the rain is scheduled for that week or whatever, is there a way to go with a tent or would you just suggest to move the event indoors? That would be the only thing I would throw out to you if you don't think.
Whoever's planning and coordinating this can figure out the logistics.
The tent, the tent, it's huge. So we'll, we'll have, we'd have to figure, we'd have to figure that out.
I think we just do a rain day.
Call it a rain day.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll do a rain day for Saturday when people come.
At that point, but at that point, so we have to be sure.
I'm teasing you.
I know, we have to be sure there is not an event at the VFW or there is not baseball because then we will be, we'll have to work through the, the shared parking agreement, which I think we, last Thursday, we had all the preferred uses and specialized uses worked out with the representatives of the VFW between the library trust, the library director and the ESS director.
All right, 6:30 to 14th, we'll see you there. Thank you. Fireworks festival funding, do we want to just do that and knock it off? Because I think the other ones will take longer. Even, I don't know if we need them here, we got a letter, right? We can sort of.
Been pretty close to the same for best for all these years. I think it, it changes by a few hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Each year. I don't have it in front of me. I think it's probably four or 500 bucks more than last year.
Yeah.
So I did, um, uh, receive, I did ask Kenny Costa for affirmation on the balance, the current expendable balance is $45,626. I did ask to let me know what the, how much, how, how much is replenished each year from interest that's accrued, but I don't have that response yet.
Could we make that part of the budget? Special committee or could we set it up in our budget?
We could. I mean, what I found in other communities is that sometimes it's good to have a line under town administrators for special events or functions, that then you can sort of take those and just lump it into there and then we can track and.
Lights and all around.
Especially if it's then going to be an annual request.
Or we still have.
Hold on, just.
It says more, that's a.
That's separate, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, questions on this men's club?
I was going to say, the only, the only thing I would mention to that is we're, and this is an instance where we were able to use the trust fund money as opposed to putting as opposed to putting it into the operational budget, then it would be coming out of the taxpayers' dollars. So the only, I think it's nicer the way we're doing it now.
Is this, um, I agree with you. Is this the, uh, trust that is the board of selectmen for any purpose?
I believe the William Nolan Trust. I think that's what it is.
Yes.
It is, okay. And because if it's got, or if it only has a, an available expendable balance of forty-five thousand dollars, and we're spending eight thousand dollars a year, and we earn a thousand dollars a year, it's going to be gone in four years.
Yeah.
So that's why, to me, the earnings part of this equation is important, right? If it, if it returns twenty-five thousand dollars a year, then we have no issue. We've got plenty of money forever, and it's not really an issue. And I know that's not the case, but I'm sort of being extreme on both, both sides of it because that would, um, let us know how sooner, sooner or later we need some alternative funding plan. And, um, I don't know that this is something we want to start funding on taxpayer dollars, but that would be a whole different discussion. Um, but for now, I'm fine with it for this year, but I think going forward, we should either, we, we should know what the expected return is if we're going to have these kinds of annual drawdowns, just so we know if this is the right place to be funding it out of.
Exactly. And I, follow up to that is that it is, it is still on staff's radar, and I know it's still on the trust fund commissions regard to be able to quantify what the annual appropriation, how much annually do you have to plan. I think so we can make some policy and guideline decisions on, you know, what kind of, um, uh, limits do you want to place on an annual basis. So, uh, that's still on the, on the to-do list, and I think expect now, especially once, um, we get past the budget and we get past town meeting, doing some of those more logistic, um, uh, you know, financial type, uh, analysis will be something that Treasure Club or Finance Director will be able to pull together now that we're, um, addressed the backlog and we're working through to, to make progress in other areas of finance efforts.
Right, I know. I know that that, and that expendable balance, not that many years ago was well over a hundred thousand dollars. And it's been, to your point, you can't spend it down eight thousand dollars a year, and when you're not making, you're not making eight thousand dollars on it, so. And it took a long time to develop that because you have to keep in mind, you could only spend the interest, you can't spend principal, so.
I guess the other question, I mean, we could do a few things. We could hold off till next meeting, do a five-year look back and see what was in that account. Our old annual reports typically will have fund balance at the end of the year. So if you want to just wait one meeting, we could probably answer a few of those questions. Maybe also see if there's a different fund we could use. That's.
I have no problem with that.
If you want to just wait, like I said, one meeting, we could do a five-year look back and see where we stand.
Yeah.
Steve, you kind of should be able to do that.
Exactly. We can either look it up ourselves.
Don't, don't even get me going on this conversation, um, in terms of how easy or hard this is to do.
Oh.
We've been asking for this for three years, so.
Everybody yet?
Asking the trust fund commission, it's not talking about the town.
Um, so I'm, I'm fine with waiting, or I'm fine with motioning this now, just recognizing that we need to talk to the men's club, we need to have an answer so that next year we are in a better position to know whether this is sustainable or not, so. That's all I would say.
I think if there was a, let me just throw one thing out. I think that if we were under a time constraint, I would say by all means, let's just get this done tonight. But since this event isn't going to happen until probably the end of June.
Yeah.
Or halfway through July, I think we'd get enough time to wait one maybe.
All right, so let's defer this to the next meeting. We'll wait till we can get some of those answers. And I think to, to your point, the main one is, is there another fund that we could potentially use that has more of a balance? If so, great, let's consider that. If we want to use this one, and it's, we're concerned about depleting the account, and we want to do it this year, but then let the men's club know next year, we're not going to be able to use this money, and they'd need to make that up somewhere else. Um, and/or we can have a conversation, you know, about other ways to fund it next year. So, okay. Question?
Outside?
The men's, the men's club makes money off the fireworks, right? Are we, are we giving money to the men's club to, like, seed money for them? What is, what are we funding?
This is, uh, security, that they put in a request for security and P A systems and safety and, yeah, because they had a, a couple of incidents.
A couple of costs of that.
Right, exactly. Yeah, because there was a, yeah, that's a history to it, but yeah. Okay. Do. I see Rick.
There's nothing there, can't make it.
I don't see Sean on there.
Maybe scroll.
Rick, Rick White requires here.
So you just scroll on the right, I just can't see Cole.
We get three. That's enough. We're not taking a vote, at least right now. We just answer questions.
You're doing whatever you want with your meeting.
That's what I thought last time.
I'd say, I'm just being clear right up front. I just, whatever you, it's your time. So it's seven fifty-seven. Do you want to wait three minutes or?
Is it possible?
Yeah, that's no problem at all. Um, so we have reopen annual town meeting warrant and insert articles. Is that just that one?
Just that one.
Okay, so why don't we talk about that? Um, this, well, why don't you walk us through it, and then we'll decide. Yep?
Okay. Uh, so, uh, came to my attention and Finance Director's attention that, uh, based on, uh, recent bills that were paid that were forecasting a deficit in the, um, Board of Health, uh, curb side service and, uh, waste removal disposal line items, uh, total of both accounts would be deficit of seventy-five thousand, three hundred dollars. Uh, that's based on sort of the current burn rate, um, that we're seeing, um, invoices coming in from E L Harvey. Board may recall, um, uh, back in September, uh, Board of Health had requested, uh, approval of a revised contract with the E L Harvey. One of the things that was, uh, struck down, that was actually, um, recycling on, under the, the bid cost, and that, uh, it would be at market rate. Uh, E L Harvey at that time had, uh, stated that, um, they projected it would be around eighty-seven dollars a ton. We had, uh, budgeted as part of the F Y twenty-three budget, about twenty-four dollars a ton. So, uh, almost a drubling of the cost. Recent bills have been in the vicinity of a hundred and six dollars a ton, up to one hundred and thirteen dollars a ton. Um, at that higher rate, that's where the deficit is now, uh, projected. Uh, it is, if we were just dealing with ten fifteen, we could probably handle it. Uh, but, uh, it's a high enough amount that I'm talking to Kenny Costa, our Finance Director. Uh, we both recommend reopening the warrant, inserting the article that I have placed there, and then closing it. Uh, it should be noted that the Board of Health does have, and this is contained in the control sheet. Uh, they do have a revolving fund that, uh, basically has about eighty-seven thousand dollars in it. Um, uh, we can have that money, uh, uh, identified as excess, and it can fall to the general fund, and it would be available in free cash for F Y twenty-four, so that wouldn't be until the fall. So essentially, we'd be, um, because we can't use that revolving fund to pay for the deficit, but by letting it fall, um, to the general fund, that becomes free cash and essentially is swapping. Use of free cash now, and then we'll just pick it up in the fall. Um, gives us the most flexibility, gives us at least a month and a half to, uh, nail things down, identify if there's anything that we can do. For example, the Board of Health, um, does have grant money that could reduce it by ten thousand. Uh, we just need some of that time to sort of pull that together. Uh, this gives us that stopgap, um, so we've had that, that placeholder and a dollar amount that we can work with.
I would assume you've gone through all the scenarios. I was thinking, obviously, if it was a smaller number, maybe a year-end transfer or something would be able to take care of that. But if it's a significant deficit, uh, and as you mentioned, with their revolving fund, there's no way to pay it out of that revolving fund this year.
Okay.
Is there enough money for a year-end transfer?
I think it's going to be tight. Um, you know, it's, uh, if we find that we don't need it, then we can just pass over it. Just at, at this point, um, we don't have enough information. No, we can make up sixty-five thousand if we use ten thousand, and we have to, um, just go through, and that's why we've implemented, uh, spending freeze as well as for this fiscal year, delaying and, um, hiring, uh, because we want to make sure we, uh, are maintaining sort of our cash, and not sort of spending through it. Um, uh, so, um, those are things we've put in place to allow us to be in shape to then do year-end transfers. Um, and if we need it, then we can pass over it on town.
Okay. All right, I'm fine with inserting it. Any other questions?
Uh, I do not.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
Can I make a couple comments or?
Uh, well, you guys, sure, go ahead.
So I just wanted to mention, so your revolving fund balance is eighty-seven, so that's, just as an ounce, that's going to increase, right? So there's, there's really no technical difference between taking it from free cash to a year-end transfer because if you did a year-end transfer, that would reduce our free cash and it's due. So that's, the, the reason why I bring it up is because of our conversation with the budget. This number on top of what we budgeted is higher than what we're budgeting this year. So something to consider. This total, bring it up to be like five fifty-three for this fiscal year, and our budget for next year, I think, is five forty-five or so. Something to consider.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good point. One of the things I'm talking to, we're on staff, was that they are seeing a reduction in the tonnage of trash and recycling. So they think even if you're using about a hundred and ten dollar, um, per ton fee for recycling, we're seeing reduced amounts that we should be within this area. Uh, this projection is also based on using last year's recycling tonnage, um, as a conservative estimate. We may, that seventy-five is based on sort of some historical data as way projecting forward. If that's less, that reduces that down even more. So it is something that the Board of Health, um, is aware, um, and, uh, they feel that it's budgeted appropriately.
I guess three minutes.
Yeah.
So what are they doing with this, these recyclers? I know when China wasn't taking anymore. Where does this recycling go?
It either is, either you're paying people to store it, um, or when, when I was talking with E L Harvey, they were also stockpiling some themselves, waiting for changes in the market, but that hasn't really happened. So it becomes a disposal item. Um, the market for, for, uh, glass, plastics has essentially dried up, and contamination is a huge issue. And if it's contaminated, then it just gets disposed of.
Ultimately burned.
So it's still a day to store it?
It can get burned, it can be dumped right with the trash.
That we're already paying a tonnage fee on regular trash.
Yeah.
And we're paying a tonnage fee on recycling that is going to eventually end up going to wheel operator and adding the tonnage there.
I think looking forward, I, I think I know where you're going, Maureen. And I think as we look forward, and this has been an ongoing problem for really three or four budget cycles, I think we really need to put our heads together next year. I hate to form one of those committees. Obviously, it won't be my decision, it will be the two of your decision with whoever the next selectman is. But we're going to have to get our heads together and figure out what to do with that B O H budget as far as insofar as that recycling component is just out of sight without achieving what we're ultimately trying to do, which is recycle.
Recycle.
Which is burning it.
Right.
Also, we'd technically be violating, um, mass law if we just said, well, that's just the default that we're required to recycle.
Okay.
I don't bring it to boss.
Do we want to, uh, make a motion?
I, I'd just like to say one thing about the motion. Um, this all makes sense as long as we fund it out of free cash. So if we do fund it out of free cash, as you mentioned, involving fund get turned in, we should be fine. We should be a net zero by November.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Maureen, do you want it?
Well, I can't find the motion.
If you don't have it, I'll take care of it.
Move. All right, wait a minute.
Okay, I got it.
You got it?
I got it.
All right.
I moved that the board vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-nine, Section ten, to reopen the warrant for the Monday, May fourth, two thousand twenty-three annual town meeting, to insert the following article on the annual town meeting warrant as may be amended by town council, and to immediately close said warrant.
I'll second the vote.
Yeah. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of seventy-five thousand, three hundred dollars or any other sum for use by the Board of Health to pay for deficits associated with waste removal, curbside services, count number zero one zero zero dash four three three dash five two zero zero five two nine six, and waste removal disposal, zero one zero zero dash five two zero zero dash five two nine three, or to take any other action relative thereto.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries by unanimous action. Chairman, would you like to open your meeting?
Oh, good. Let me just speak to this, if I may, for a second. The, uh, that number could be reduced at the motion, at the motion card. At the time, it shouldn't. If some magical incident take place that you find that we don't need this, you don't, that, uh, that number could be substantially, substantially reduced at, on the motion card. Probably unlikely that the possibility exists.
And we, we, just like all of them, we would then identify as part of the motion of funding source. We would identify the funding source within that motion.
Yes, yes. All right. The Finance Committee, meeting, um, March twenty-first, may call, be in Harvard at, I guess it's, what's it, eight oh seven. So, um, we have Ian Kempfett, and I think we have Mr. Maguire on the screen behind me, Mr. Byrne, and myself present. I know Mr. Ensco has indicated he will not be available tonight. Thank you. About that. Here's. All right. What was your answer, Mr. Sanders?
Uh, so, uh, for both Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, uh, similar to our last meeting, uh, where, uh, we had departments that were, uh, requesting financial articles, uh, from capital or, uh, financially related, uh, we were holding off until tonight to have the boards and committees that were also presenting articles, um, for consideration on the town meeting warrant, uh, to speak to their, uh, requests. Uh, those committees would be Historical Commission, uh, uh, Lakes and Bonds Committee, my package is correct, and, uh, Economic Development Committee. So I did see, uh, uh, Ed was on briefly. I saw him pop up with, he's the chair of that Historical, uh, commission.
Welcome, Mr. Phillips. How are you?
I have my mic on, I'm very good. Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you want to walk us through the request?
I believe, Joe, I don't have them in front of me, but I believe there's three requests. The first one that comes to mind is a five thousand dollar request to have, uh, someone reconstruct the sign at Heritage Park. The sign at Heritage Park, uh, I don't know when it was built, but many, many years ago, made out of wood and is seriously deteriorated, rotting and breaking up. Uh, so we've, uh, received several bids, uh, one of them, Blackstone Valley Tech, I believe, we're going to have manufacture a new sign out of high-density structural foam that should last lifetimes, hopefully. So that's, uh, warrant article, uh, number one for the Historical Commission. Uh, the second one is we have requested as a commission a twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, fund to use as a discretionary fund for future emergency repairs, uh, Historical Commission work, such as the recent, uh, roof repairs that were done at, uh, Holy Angels Church to prevent the roof from leaking. Uh, I believe the roof leaked there for well over a year before any action was taken to, uh, to repair it. We don't want to see that happen again. Um, the Heritage Park sign, which, uh, has been in the works for six to nine months. The Heritage Park sign, which has been in the works for six to nine months. So for small projects that we would seek the Board of Selectmen pre-approval and Town Manager approval before expending it, but to put a fund in place for that purpose, for historical preservation use on small projects. And the third warrant article is used, and that would be, the Heritage Park sign would be CPC funds. The twenty-five thousand dollar fund for Historical Commission use would be out of town, the town vote to raise the funds. The third warrant article is a warrant article for restoration of Upton Grange on School Street. That's a hundred and twenty thousand dollar request using CPC funds. We have recently, last Friday, submitted a, uh, grant application request to the Mass Historical Commission for a fifty percent matching amount, which would be as much as eighty thousand dollars if approved and if the funding is available, to be awarded sometime in June to go with a hundred and twenty thousand dollar CPC funds, providing two hundred thousand dollars or potentially that much for Grange restoration, roofing, siding, handicap ramp, and a few other external repairs to that building, which is Upton's oldest standing schoolhouse. So those are the three. If anybody has any questions, I'll see if I can add a little bit to it.
Ed, this is Rick McGuire. I do have, I guess, a question and a comment. Some of the town citizens have come to me and they have asked, are we able to take CPC funds and use it for a private facility? And I did some research on that, and the law's not, it's kind of fuzzy as to what it's saying. But anyway, it says, bottom line is this, CPA funds may be able to fund a project on private property, but only if the project is advancing a public purpose such as the municipality acquiring a deed restriction, providing public asset, access to a property where there was none before, or some other public benefit recommended by your municipal council. I would highly recommend that the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee go in and ask our legal counsel, what is the appropriate approach? Because it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on private property. And number two, pursue a deed restriction.
As part of the vote of the CPC and as part of the potential Mass Historical Commission grant, a preservation restriction agreement has been signed by the Grange members. That would be required either way that a preservation restriction in perpetuity would have to be signed and put on the deed of that property before the Mass Historical Commission would release a single dollar of funding if they approve the grant in June. And the CPC agreement was that if, even if the grant from the state doesn't come through, that an external preservation restriction would have to be filed on the deed for the use of CPC funds. Second, I did have a conversation with the members, the co-chairman of the Mass Historical Commission, about the very question that has been asked, and have been assured that numerous properties across the state of Massachusetts have, A, received Mass Historical Commission grant funding in conjunction with CPA funds to restore nonprofit properties across the state that were not the first to attempt to do this. This has been done in numerous cases.
That's correct, but thank you for your response. The town of Plymouth has done that, Grayden Barrington has done that, and again, it was with appropriate deed restriction, so it's good news.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think from my position, I, I have the same concern, and I just want to make sure that we understand what exactly that deed restriction looks like. Is that a situation where they cannot resell the property at any point without refunding funds back to the town? Obviously, if it's a charitable organization and they sell the property, the question is what protection then does the town have? So I think that's just the only thing I'd like to understand, and I'm not sure any of us would have that answer, but, you know, we can work forward to trying to figure that part out.
Well, the answer that, that I have is the deed restriction would preserve the historic nature of the building, both internally and externally, if it's put on the deed. So that if the building was sold next year to someone who wanted to turn it into condos, they would not be allowed to change the historic nature, structure, and fabric of that building. The State Historical Commission would not allow it, and I presume we would probably not allow it either. But that is attached to the deed in perpetuity, so no matter whether the property is sold or not, it becomes the part of the deed, the same as an easement would, or a lien, or any other restriction. So it permanently protects the town of Upton to preserve that building as its first schoolhouse, that it could not be changed in appearance.
In addition, deed restriction would enable if the town is the holder or the preservation easement to enforce to prevent the Grange from making changes themselves, doesn't need some, it's not only if it gets sold, it's from the current owners of the property for making any alterations that would have a negative impact, gives us the ability to enforce against that and to prevent that. It's held by Mass Historic, exact same thing.
Mr. McGuire, I commend you, because that was one of the questions that I was, was going to ask. I had researched it to a point, but not to the, to the degree that you did, sir. But the question, or the situation that I pose is, be extremely careful taking a grant from Mass Historical. Case in point, the building we're sitting in right now. Way back, we took a grant money to do the roof. I forget, long before we did the renovation. But we took the grant money from Mass Historical to do the roof. And then when we tried to rent, when we tried to renovate this building, if you look, the same old windows were here that were in there before. These restrictions are extremely, uh, they tie you up, let's put it that way. They're very restrictive. So I would look long and high at what that, uh, grant from Mass Historical is gonna result with.
One-twenty is the full amount, though, right?
No.
With no grant?
Yes.
So we're talking about one hundred and twenty plus eighty for the grant?
No, that represents the grant, um, and Ed had been working on this. The hundred and twenty is for the full amount. If we get the grant, then, you know, that would be reduced in half. The Historical Commission voted that regardless of the grant that the project was worth moving forward.
Let me, let me clarify to make sure we're all speaking from the same gospel here. The, the grant request, to Paul's point, even the initial application became slightly complicated. So the definition to the Mass Historical Commission is that the project is a hundred and sixty thousand dollar project. If we received the grant award for fifty percent, they would give eighty thousand dollars. The request from the CPC, from the Grange to the CPC is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So it would be a hundred and twenty thousand plus eighty thousand from the state, so it would be a two hundred thousand dollar restoration to that building. A hundred and sixty thousand as defined to the state, which states in the grant application, you have to have seventy-five percent of the total project cost for cash flow, because the state is not gonna pay you a penny until you've paid the contractor. So the money comes after the fact. So a hundred and twenty thousand became seventy-five percent of a hundred and sixty thousand, so we defined the application as a hundred and sixty thousand dollar project, asking for eighty thousand from the state, which would leave us with forty thousand dollars of CPC money after all that is done to finish the restoration, probably replacing windows or something, depending on how the cost and the bids come in, when all this is said and done later this year. So if that confuses anybody, raise your hand, otherwise I'll, I hope everybody caught that. Rather complicated.
It sounds like, don't we go, I'm assuming they're only gonna go as far as the hundred and twenty thousand takes them, is what I'm guessing, but the part that doesn't necessarily make sense is if it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollar project and they get the matching, the eighty thousand dollar grant, you're gonna spend two hundred. So is it a hundred and sixty thousand dollar project? Or is it a two hundred K project? Or is that forty coming back to the CPC?
It's intended at this point to spend a two hundred thousand dollars, assuming we get full grant funding.
I think the question is, if you don't get the grant, are you still gonna use the hundred and twenty thousand and, and do what you can with that?
Absolutely. The initial estimates from the architect came in at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the work. I'm hoping he's, he's a little over the top on some of his estimates, and he tried to get, he tried to get them inside to replace one of the bathrooms and do work on the other one. But the vote from the Historical Commission and the recommendation to the CPC was for external restoration only, that any internal work would have to be left to the Grange and their own fundraising work. So external restoration with an estimate in the two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, but the intent is to, to spend all of the CPC money, no matter what happens with the State Historical grant.
I have a couple more questions, if I may, Ed. Is that, does, does, Mr. Layden, does he have the source of how you come up with the hundred and twenty thousand dollars? If not, could you write that to the, to the manager? The, this backup documentation is, so justifies the hundred and twenty thousand? Sorry?
So our estimate of what they.
Yeah. And the other, my other, excuse me, the other observation is this, and perhaps Mr. Manager can help me out. If you perform any remodeling work on a structure that increases the value by X percentage, and I'm not sure what that percentage is, you are required to make it one hundred percent ADA MABB compliant. So where do we set, where do we stand with that with respect to this project?
Two very good questions. The first question, I'm not sure I completely understood, but let me answer what I think you are asking. The initial estimates of what it would take to do roof replacement, siding and, and painting, handicap ramp replacement, was estimated by one of the Grange members, Ken Paulson and myself, that a hundred and twenty thousand would cover all of that work. The estimates came in from the architect at over two hundred thousand dollars for that work. So the original estimate of one-twenty from the CPC came prior to hiring an architect and getting his estimates on it. And at that point, we were all already in discussions.
You provide that, those estimates and everything to the Finance Committee, please?
The latest estimates?
I want any estimates having to do with that project. And the other question I ask is, your estimates that you are dealing with, are you including prevailing wage involved in, involved in that? Because it's a state, it's a public project, and public, public projects require prevailing wage, and depending on how big the project is, all your payrolls have to be certified through the, uh, through the general contractor, through the town. There's, there's, when you're talking about these projects, there's a lot more below the surface that a lot of people aren't aware of, that, that these facts that I'm referring to play an important role in this project. That's all I'm, I'm saying. And I, I, I'm speaking in respect.
Well, if you're using public funds, you have to pay prevailing wage, yes.
According to Mass State law, use of the public funds by a nonprofit does not require using prevailing wage. I went over that with the Mass State Historical Commission and checked with the architect and the Mass Law. So because it's a nonprofit, they do not have to seek contractors and pay prevailing wage. Interesting twist in the Mass State law. Now, the original estimates were provided in the warrant article backup material. If you have that, Paul.
We don't, that's why I asked, Mr. Manager.
All right, any other questions for Ed from the board?
Just backup on this.
Regarding.
I'm sorry, Steve, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, I, I'm kind of good with this particular one, and that one I was gonna move to before. You can bring up what you'd like to regarding this one, but I want to bring up something regarding the twenty-five thousand dollar annual request. So if you want to go for, but I would say, I, I would say, we're walking, as far as this particular article, you know, I think we all have the same concern, right? It's, it's, I understand it's a nonprofit, I understand they owned that particular property for, Mr. Phillips, I think you told me it was either nineteen seventy, or seventy-one, or sixty-nine, or somewhere back in that day. It's a five oh one C eight charity, I get that. I mean, they're renting space, we're using public dollars to benefit the nonprofit. You know, I, I don't really like that use of those funds myself personally. I just look it down, I say, that particular building isn't open to the public. So again, there's a dance studio there, and I don't know what else is there, so, you know, what other, other entities are in that building? So they don't really like this particular use of public funds, but I think at this point, you know, we've, at least looking at all the options, and at least everybody has expressed some concern with this.
So, just to be clear, this project could cost two hundred thousand dollars, but you're only looking for a hundred and twenty thousand from the CPC. Now, should you be successful with the hundred and twenty thousand and there's additional work you find to be, that is required, you're gonna be coming back next year for, for additional funds? No, I, I understand it's CPC, and, you know, CPC is, is still, still taxpayer dollars. It's not as, what some people refer to as, as, as free money. That's the taxpayers' money as well, so. I guess, is the, the hundred and twenty is the appropriation? The actual cost of the job is gonna be two hundred thousand. If you're not successful in completing it this year with your money you have, you're gonna be coming back next year looking for more money. I think that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, the answers to the various questions is, is first off, the building was sold to the Grange in nineteen twenty-six by the town of Upton. I believe they stopped using it as a school in nineteen twenty-four, twenty-five. Second, the building has been used by the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and a few other organizations throughout the town, so it has been made available and is made available for public use if people request it. There is a dance studio in there five days a week, but they're not in there during the day. And the space is offered by the Grange to anyone who wants to use it. So it has been made for public service. It is used for agricultural fairs and stuff to benefit the, the town and the members in the town. These are some of the arguments that had to be made to the State Commission with the grant application. The basic desire is to do much of the exterior restoration as is possible with funding that can be raised to do that. If the Mass State Historical Commission does not grant the eighty thousand or grants something and says, we don't have eighty, we'll give you forty, the way I have pitched it to the architect and the Grange is, you need to put out a bid that categorizes each of the phases of the, the renovation work, the restoration work on the exterior of that building in a prioritized order, and that has been documented in the grant application, such that if you get down to the fourth or fifth item and the bids come in high and there's no money left, that's all that will get done. It is difficult to answer the question whether we would consider letting them go back to the CPC or the, or the Historical Commission next year and say, we got this, this, and this done, but we want to do, you know, this and that, and we need more money. I don't know, I can't answer that. I hope not, but it was stated to the CPC last month that that is a possibility, that they'll come back in the future looking for more to finish restoration on that building. They have done probably thirty or forty thousand dollars worth of restoration work on that building in the last fifteen years, from new boiler to replacement of rotted sills to bathroom restoration work, kitchen restoration work inside. So that the remaining work that has not been attacked is, is the restoration of the exterior of that building to bring it back to what it looked like in the. like in 1851, I should say, when it was built.
The caveat I have is, and I asked either the opponent of the article or Mr. Manager to find out what this project involves, is it going to trigger making the building 100% ADA compliant?
So I think, one, I believe the CPC is holding their public hearing on these articles. I think it's, yeah, it's in April, I was trying to, was it the 17th, Ed?
I think it's the 5th.
Okay. So that'll be a good question to make sure that we have an answer for that for the CPC hearing, because that could have an impact.
And I trust you will take care of that? Thank you.
CPC balances are?
Not.
Secondly, I know the CPC doesn't vote to recommend to spend the funds, they just thought their function was to make sure that they were coming before the town, met the four corners of the CPC, so.
They should be doing both.
At least.
They should.
They have not recommending on whether the town should be passing it. They do not do that. As far as I know, they do not do that. They recommend that it should move forward to the, for the town, for the taxpayers, for the town meeting to vote on that. Be interesting to know what the CPA balances are, assuming, can you sense it, everybody?
Can you see it?
They should have.
I don't mean, I mean, I can look it up, it's in what I sent it on. It was just interesting.
Probably in the annual report, I just don't know if the annual report will capture anything that was spent last November.
Steve, that changes. You got it. In the monthly reports that get sent out, there are the balances for the CPA accounts, CPC accounts in there. Any other questions from the board on Article 18?
That's as of last year.
We should have received payment, I mean, it would be part, so whatever we have, we received money in the fall.
Eight months, Friday and last year, plus the state.
Joe, can you guys save this?
Thank you.
Ed, I muted you because there's some feedback, and the board wanted to hear Ken.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear because of the feedback, I'm sorry, what's the question?
Balance in the CPA account.
The CPC balances, if you have those up, Ed, if you don't have them, I don't need you to look them up, I can look them up on the report, so I was curious.
I haven't, I was just looking at the report that I sent to the CPC about a month ago. I mean, their total between the undesignated account and the reserves, it's about 1.6 million, or about 1.7 million for all of community preservation between the reserves and undesigned it. And I can provide a more updated, it's just that spreadsheet that I have, it also includes all the projects as well.
All right, if I can just hold for a second, do you have any other questions on Article 18? Steve, do you have any other questions on Article 18?
I do not.
Okay. Bear with me. Given that we spent 40 minutes talking about Article 18, I figured we could just take the opportunity, if it's okay with you, for the board to have the discussion about including this in the warrant or not, so I'm fine with it. Do you have any concerns with including it on the warrant?
Article 18.
Which is the Grange?
I'm okay.
You're good. Okay, just so we don't have to check one off that we don't have to talk about after FinCom leaves, so. Okay, thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chairman, for any other questions on Article 18.
Rick, why, any more questions regarding this? Bishop?
Oh, I'm good, we talked about the restrictions, Steve Matalian did mention the idea of a clawback, but I think that really comes down to a coordination with our attorney, just to make certain everything is proper.
Mr. Byrne, good day. Good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Sean, Sean Craig, do you have any questions on regarding this?
Not so much about
I've got a non-profit, so.
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think one thing I'm kind of curious of is how a nonprofit that is zoned as a function hall is able to have a for-profit business such as DWA being conducted on site. That seems like it's improperly zoned. Is that, does that perhaps provide, is that an issue later on if zoning should say that this business that they need to rezone, does that have some sort of impact on this article?
There's any issues that would be a, or a potential zoning violation, that would be through the code, it would be a separate issue than what would be associated with this project.
Could I inquire with Mr. Manager if he could get, have KP weigh in on this, as to the issues with, John Craig just brought forward, as Steve has brought forward, he can maybe tell you the question that I have about what kicks in ADA compliance. There's a lot of moving parts with this, as far as I can say, so.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, we need to make sure that KP's okay with all this, right? Because our deliberation is, it's well thought out, everybody's raised some really good issues and some good points, however, if there's an issue with KP, that's ultimately going to be my deciding, oh, who's going to be what they, what they think, right?
Done with Article 18? Is the finance committee done with Article 18?
Yes.
Sean, oh, you can ask your people. Okay, so Article 19, I think, Steve, you had some questions about the funds for historic preservation, the 25,000.
Can I ask more comment?
No.
So I was going to say with that, Article 18, this is a free cash request, we're going to fund that every year, or how are we looking to do that? And as I'm just trying to, two things, I don't want to get into a raise in appropriate each year for the, you know, historic preservation, and the only other thing I would say is for emergency repairs, again, FinCom has some emergency money at their disposal, we have also some money that we typically use for legal things such as surveys, so I kind of hate, myself personally, I like to see all those issues flow through the BOS, I don't like to find out that there's a repair happening in town and there's a hole in a roof or something and we're not aware of it, so. I guess I'd like to just better understand how we're going to fund that 25K each and every year. I'm assuming you're looking for this each year?
Mr. Phillips, that's a question for you.
That's a one-time request only.
Steve, I got the sense that they weren't going to do anything without town manager and board of selectmen approval with the fund, that's what I got the sense they asked.
Question for the article.
Okay.
So I was saying, but I think when, either you said it or he said it, they said that they would be seeking for town manager or selectmen approval before you see it, this is allowing them to have the balance and say, hey, we don't have to go back and go through the motions of an article.
You get the warrant article or waiting for it.
They have 25,000, so they could have repaired the roof at the church.
The historic preservation statement to pass for when they need it.
Okay, yeah.
Steve, this is an article that's going to stay for three years anyway, and it can continue if the financial director and the board of selectmen concur.
Yeah, okay. Again, I just wanted to better understand that.
Any questions on Article 19?
Awesome.
Anything else on that?
I don't think it'll, that obviously does not, it'll stay there, it doesn't get captured at the year end, it stays in that fund, okay.
And are we good with including that on the warrant?
I am, insofar as it's going to flow through the board of selectmen and fine with that.
Yep.
Again, I just like to make sure that the board's aware money's going to be expensed, so I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, Article 19 is in your hands.
I don't, I have other questions on it right now, my question goes the same as Steve's. Agreed. Sean? Rick?
No questions.
No other questions from my perspective.
All right, anything else on the Heritage Park sign, are we good with Article 17? 17 is okay?
I just drove by there, I thought the sign looked okay, but that's just me.
Steve, the sign's gone.
Oh?
Sign's not there.
I saw it there, I swear, it was two days ago.
I believe so.
Do you have any questions?
Okay.
So we're good with Article 17 on the warrant? Okay, great. All right, thank you, Mr. Phillips. Next up, we have Mr. Tom Manager.
Oh, thank you, gentlemen.
Take care.
Good evening, thank you.
Okay, so next we have Article 20, which is sponsored by Lakes and Ponds, and I believe Mike Panko is on the call.
Yes, I am, good evening, everybody.
Mr. Panko, welcome.
Can you hear me? Okay.
I can hear you, it's fine.
Great, thank you. So this article is basically a continuation of the Mill and Pratt Pond studies that were just approved by your board. We call it Phase 1 was approved, which was data collection, water quality and some sediment data collection. Phase 2, which is what this request is for, is to develop management plans for the two ponds and also to collect some additional data. And additional data would be some additional sediment work and also a bathymetric survey. Basically, that's basically an underwater topographical survey. That's a data gap from Mill Pond. We already have one of those for Pratt Pond. So we don't currently have a vendor cost estimate. We do have the proposal, the proposal was approved by the committee yesterday, last Tuesday, and now that we have Phase 1 awarded essentially, we'll put out a request to vendor for a quote for Phase 2.
Thank you. Questions on Article 20?
Well, I'd kind of like to see what first phase we bring forward, before spending 50,000 more.
Yeah, I mean, that's my only concern, as you mentioned, Maureen, is we're 40,000 for the first part of the study, now we're going to be 50,000, that's going to give us, I think he said topographical, which I know that's now underwater, of course, to understand what's under there, and I'm assuming a remediation plan as well? Are we not getting that?
We would get a, not a feasibility level study for Mill Pond, it would be more of a, just a very initial take on what could be done at Mill Pond. Mill Pond is the pond that has problems, and basically the alternatives they would look at in this Phase 2 would be fixing the dam, removing the dam, dredging some sediment out to restore open water, things like that. And we get an initial assessment of those alternatives, plus a management plan for Pratt Pond, where we don't expect there to be really any, you know, major issues, but the, during Phase 2, all the data that we're collecting during Phase 1 would be evaluated by professionals to give us some answers about both ponds. I do feel that the timing is okay, because we should have the data report, which is going to be the, basically the product of Phase 1 by the fall, and then the thought would be that information we could hand to the Phase 2 contractor, and they could, you know, make a professional evaluation with that information. I don't think there's anything in Phase 1, we're not going to find anything in Phase 1 that would not want us to go ahead with Phase 2.
Yeah, and I look at this, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, right, like this is part of a process that leads us to justifying a very significant, potential significant investment in sort of restoring Mill Pond and maintaining it as part of the ecosystem preservation, but also as part of the aesthetic of downtown, and in order to do that work, you need to have these studies and you need to have the information on what needs to be done, how it is, how it is that that work could be done, what you'd expect it to cost, right? So this is basically, you know, we're paying to do the study and the plan, so that we can decide if it's worth it to, if the community, the community has the data to make the decision around whether or not they want to spend money to do some sort of remediation, restoration, or what have you at Mill Pond. So I think that's, that's what this is feeding into, is that decision.
What is the scope of project for the first phase?
For the first phase.
Where's the contract? So that long?
For the first phase?
Yes, that's a That's a contract we just approved.
Yeah, and I mean, I guess if I'm just going to think out loud for a second, I'll give you a minute to review that, but I'm, I'm just kind of thinking from a timing standpoint, I know we're just going to disagree a little. Mike, I understand where you're coming from, this flowing into November, getting the details from the contract into November, and then being able to use the second piece of the equation, but I was kind of thinking like Maureen was, in the fact that it might be better to address this particular article in November, that way we have the data from the first article in hand. And one of the reasons I'm going with that is, you know, we are 40 articles deep into this warrant, so we've got to simplify somewhere, or I just think it's going to be a dismal night myself.
So this came up in November, this was originally a 75,000 article that we tweaked down to 40, which we thought was going to pay for the study and then additional testing. I made a comment during our meeting that said, the cost of this is going to be 40,000, because whoever's going to be doing this is going to know it's out there. We put 50,000 towards this, the next phase is going to be 50,000. We should be getting estimates before we approve something to let them set the market and then let the town know what the cost is. We are doing this backwards. So the timing or no timing, he knows he needs an estimate, second time in a row, he hasn't come up with an estimate for this. We need an estimate before we approve money. This is backwards.
Mr. Byrne, before you came in, they discussed signing the warrant. The appropriation was 40,000. Coincidentally, the contract price is 39,900, and there's nothing.
Guys, this happens everywhere, every day, all the time, in every industry and every business. You have relationships, you know how to get things done, you know how much they cost, you go in and you say, hey.
We don't know how much it costs.
We don't know the whole Ferrari spread.
We, you could do these studies for, okay, I mean, I hear what people are saying, right? Obviously. That being said, there are people that understand and know this business, right? I know my business, Steve knows his business, people know this business, right? So if you ask me how much it costs to build software for something, I'm going to say, yeah, it's about 50,000, and then if I put a quote together and I get approval for 50,000, you can bet your butt that I'm going to get that work done for 50,000. If I go out and say to people, hey, I've got this work to get done, I need to get it done, and it's going to cost 50,000, they're not going to say, oh, it's going to cost 80,000, they're not going to get the job. They're not going to say it's going to cost 20,000 because they can't get it done. Like, I think we're, my view is that we're putting too much emphasis on sort of nickels and dimes on this stuff, I get it, it's 50,000, it's a lot of money, but whether it costs 45,000 or 55,000, like, it's on the margins. These guys have done these studies, they've done them in different places. They have to.
They haven't, they haven't.
They have.
This whole thing to us is 75,000 based on a 2010, something that was done in 2010 for Concorde, we don't know what this is. I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying for most things, not this. This was supposed to be 75, now it's 90, and we don't know what that means. This is a problem.
Go ahead, Mike.
May I say something to that point? You're right, our initial estimate was 75, now the two together is 90, but two factors relate to that increase, one is simply inflation, we pushed this work off by a year, and the second is, we did add an item that was not in the original scope, that was for 75, and that is, again, that bathymetric survey, that underwater topography, basically. We're certainly in the ballpark. 40 plus 50 is 90 versus 75 initially. So, um, all I can say is that, you know, we're going to actively get some quotes. We, I hope that we're going to have a quote before the CPA hearing on, uh, April 5th. You know, it didn't seem wise to, 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 uh, go out asking for quotes before we knew the status of the Phase One request. And also, uh, like I said before, this, the committee, the Lakes and Ponds Committee just voted on the, uh, basically the content of the Phase Two scope last Tuesday. But, but I'm confident we'll have, uh, at least one cost estimate, uh, you know, certainly by town meeting and very hopefully by when the CPC has its meeting on April 5th.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't do the project, but I think from the first phase, you've got an Mill Pond water quality study that will give you a better idea of what kind of an estimate that you would get. I'm saying maybe push this off until November, until after we get the first phase done and go from there.
That would be my, that would, that would be my feeling. And we're talking about things going forward and, and Mike mentioned something that lit fires in my eyes. Replace the dam. That's not going to be a 10 cent project. That's, that's going to be big time money now. Maybe there's state money involved in it, but replacing that dam is, is long. And that's been there since probably 1940, 1950, somewhere in there.
I mean, I, I clearly am in the minority. I'm clearly in the minority on this one. I get it, but we're all here to share our perspectives, right? Like, it went from 75 to 90, and that was from November to now. So, let's punt this off till November again, and maybe it'll be 105, right?
105 is medium. That's my point. This is not an increase. The 75 to 90 is not inflation. The 75 to 90 is reality. So, my point is that the 50, who knows if that's right? So, we should have estimates. And what is the timing, Mike? I'm not trying to push this off. I know it's important. We're doing this blindly, we're doing it backwards. That's my big concern. You can get an estimate. I can call time bond and get an estimate for this one. You're delaying it because you want to get the money and you just want to prove that you're going to get the money, or something's going on. Because you can get an estimate for this anytime you want. They know what the first phase is. You know what you want to do in the second phase. Or if you don't, then you need to wait, like Maureen said, for the results of Phase One to do Phase Two. However, if timing is an issue, get an estimate.
Yeah.
That's all, get an estimate. This all, this is all nothing. This is all going to be something where everyone's going to agree with what Brett says. We're going to move forward. But if you, if we don't vote 50 and all of a sudden it's 70, it's not inflation. That's not, that's not the answer.
Through, through the chair, I just want to state one more time, the $15,000 difference, in my opinion, was due to some extent to inflation, also to adding an additional item to the scope. And, uh, secondly, you know, through the chair, respectfully to the FinCon, it's not as easy to get these quotes as, as, uh, you've said. And again, you know, the Lakes and Ponds Committee, we meet once a month. Last Tuesday, we finally had an opportunity to actually approve.
Mike, you're muted or we saw you.
No, I'm not muted. Sorry, can you hear me?
No, you're, you're back, you're back, you're back.
I'm sorry. But, but again, you know, I don't want to repeat myself, but Lakes and Ponds meets, meets once a month. We, at our last meeting, we finally had an opportunity to, uh, as a group, approve the scope that's going to be sent out to vendors for cost estimates. Again, you know, I'm hoping to have at least one cost estimate before the CPC meets. Um, and certainly, you know, based on last, you know, last year's experience, we certainly won't go to town meeting without a cost estimate. So, I think 50 is reasonable for, for this, for this particular, uh, effort that's proposed for Phase Two. But we'll see.
Am I permitted to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I guess we're to the point now where the pause on your court, do you want to put this on the warrant or not?
We're going to discuss that later. You guys have any questions on this?
I, I, I've had my feelings, and my feelings are the same. Just say this, Mr. Byrne. Mr. McGuire? You ready to add to this, sir?
I, I just have to support Steve Byrne's comments on that. I, I think we're moving too fast. Uh, I do support the overall remediating this pond and doing our best, but we need to put things in the proper order.
Any other, any else?
Nothing additional.
Mike, what, uh, what bucket would this command for community preservation?
I believe it would be the Undesignated Fund.
Like, is there timing on this? So, you're going to get Phase One results when? When do you get Phase One results and what?
The, the fieldwork for Phase One will be, uh, done in probably, uh, October. And then we're looking for a data report without any, uh, analysis, um, you know, just the data, just the straight data. Uh, I believe in November, December. So, we probably wouldn't need, actually have that report until after the fall town meeting.
Are you going to do Phase Two in spring?
We probably will be getting little snippets of the data all along, but the actual final data report, uh, won't be till, you know, late in the year.
So, Phase Two is spring. You have to get, you have to do Phase Two.
Next year.
After the winter. You can't do it during the winter. Same thing with Phase One, where you needed the money beforehand?
Well, Phase Two, most of it is desk work. There are those two components, the bathymetric survey and the sediment sampling. They could occur, both those things could occur anytime there wasn't ice on the pond. It's, they're not as seasonally restricted as Phase One, where we wanted to start sampling in April and go through a whole season through October. As long as, not ice, those, those other two, um, activities could be performed. And then, again, the, uh, the rest of it is, is, is desk work, collecting information, writing the report, public, uh, participation, things like that.
Uh, Mike, just a question. What are the implications if this doesn't go on to the warrant in the spring and it has to get put up till the fall? Are there adverse implications from a research process timeline perspective?
Well, I think it would be unfortunate, but, you know, would it be critical? This isn't time critical, absolutely time critical. The pond's been, Mill Pond, I'm speaking about, has been gradually, um, degrading for years. You know, will another year make much of a difference? Probably not. My, I, I do feel the sooner we get, you know, through these kind of initial, initial phases, then, uh, it would be time to start looking for, uh, for grant money, for state funding, for, um, you know, to, to take a really hard, hard look at Mill Pond.
Yeah, and the way that I look at this as well is, you know, this is, this is taxpayer money that's set aside in community preservation for preservation of the resources in the community. And, you know, when you have momentum on these things, I think it's important and prudent to maintain that momentum and keep moving forward. So, that's just my opinion. We have no more questions from the board on Article 20. So, Mr.
I guess we're done? Guess we're done?
You're done with 21 or 20? Okay, the Warren Brook Bridge. Do we want to talk about that one next?
Um, Marcella, I believe, is on the line. She's the Chair of this institution committee.
Hi. So, um, what, what questions do you have? We, uh, you know, we're looking to get state funding on this, uh, actually federal, state funding to help support this through a trails grant. And, um, if we can fund the, the bulk of it through the trails grant, I think it would be a very reasonable expense to request from the CPA funds. Does anyone have any questions about the necessity of the, um, bridge? Mike did forward some information, um, maps and, um, a proposed, um, the, the imagery of what the, um, bridge is to look like. I don't know if you all had a chance to see that, but, um, I hope that you'd agree that we, uh, are looking for this funding in, in order to, um, make this as safe a crossing as possible. It is, um, you know, something that, because of the, the force of the water, you can see from the image there that the water does move through there very quickly and when there's high water and makes that connection impossible, except without, except, you know, if we, unless we have the bridge. Without the bridge, you could only cross through there in drought conditions. And we get those frequently, but not frequently. You know, it's not consistent. And, um, the, the bridge is, um, you know, it, it should provide a very safe crossing for, um, under, and in all conditions, we can proceed.
Great, thank you. Questions on Article 21? We'll do board for this board, then we'll do that board. I think it'll be Marcella.
When, uh, would you be filing for this? And how much would be available? When would you be filing for the grant and how much would be available?
The grant has been, the grant proposal has been submitted. Um, Mike, do you have the details on when the money, when the awards are being made and?
Yes, I do. The award will be in, uh, expected in June. And if we get the grant, it would pay for, um, approximately 80% of the cost, which was assumed to be about $100,000. The $120,000 we're asking for has, has a contingency on it. But, um, um, we won't, probably best in past years, mid to late June is when the, the state will announce the, the grant awards.
Did I understand that right? The $120,000 does not cover the full cost of the contract?
It does.
No, it, it, it does, it does. It, 120 includes a pretty substantial, um, cushion for, um, contingency.
I see. And if you get the grant, the grant will offset part of that $120,000?
80%.
I don't have it in my packet tonight.
It offsets 80%.
Got it, okay.
So, I'm sorry. You guys have 88.2 as the total design build? Where, what's the 100 and the 120 then?
Um, the, right, 88.2, that, that estimate is from about a year ago. So, that the 120, it's, it's not quite 120, but it's a 30% inflation slash contingency added.
So, they're estimating 88.2 to turn to 100, 80% from the grant. So, this, this 120 can turn into 20 for CPC.
Got it. And then they get the 20% contingency, which turns it from the 100 to 120.
Is that right, Mike? So, we, if you, if 120 is approved and the cost is 100 and you get 80%, that means that $40,000 for your cost still 100 is coming back?
Well, let's say, let's say the construction, design, construction cost was $100,000. That is what we apply to the state for, for their grant. So, they would pay 80. The town would be, uh, town's, um, obligation would be 20,000.
Got it. I, I guess my only statement, I'll, I'll reiterate, Marcella, and I know Mike, both of you probably weren't on one of our previous meetings, but my only complaint, I suppose, would be the timing of it. There's been some discussion over the last year or so about, uh, getting access up onto Stefan's Farm property. So, it just seems unusual that we would be, we just acquired the Robertson property three years ago. So, it just seems odd that we're all of a sudden, immediately going to go put a footbridge in for $120,000 on this property when for the last, I don't know, how old the estimates were that I looked at probably three, four, five years ago. And of course, we brought the property 20 odd years ago for Stefan's Farm. We still don't have access onto that property. So, you know, my only complaint is prioritization. I'd like to see us to have access to that Stefan's Farm property before I can really have a few good feeling about constructing a $120,000 bridge in the middle of the woods when the town of Upton has, I rode all over these woods when I was a kid. I mean, we probably have 1,000 miles of trails out there. So, I know looping a trail is interesting, but we have 1,000 miles of trails. So, I'm not sure why the importance of this coming forward at this particular point in time.
Well, 1,000 miles is a bit of an exaggeration, but, um, the problem with the Stefan's property is that we don't own the access. We don't own enough frontage or, or workable frontage to put in an affordable vehicular access, if that's what you're looking for. If you want pedestrians.
I don't want to, I don't want to get, both of us are, Marcella, both of us are going to get scolded if we get too far off the tracks on this, this article. But I would only say that we own a piece of property on Orchard Street, so we have plenty of access on Orchard Street. That's finally complaint. So, I'd like to see, uh, you know, those projects move forward again before, I don't know. Do I want to, personally, do I want to spend $120,000 in the middle of the woods? Not particularly. But, uh, you know, that's my two cents. But I, I will go to the board.
That's fine, I, I, I understand. But, uh, on a brighter note, that this footbridge would provide, uh, better access to Stefan's Farm as well to Stephen's Farm as well, because the new property on the Canic Street abuts that. So it, it will, it would help complete the, the trail network up there to have the trail, whether it's with the bridge or not. But we, you know, the bridge would certainly help a lot to have access to all the trails in that area. And just let it be known, we've certainly had a lot of discussions about making Stephen's more accessible. But like I said, the problem there is, the town does not own any, any easy place to put a road on that land. So we've got plenty of foot, foot access, though. You can walk in there all you want.
Okay.
Do you guys have a sense of the likelihood of getting the grant?
That's impossible to say. It depends on what other proposals were submitted and how much the requests are for the various other proposals. And they don't, they don't really put a lot of information out there until the grants are actually awarded. So I can't say.
Marcelo, I apologize. I don't, I don't have anything, estimates or anything in front of me. But it's like you said, there was a number there that was like a year old.
88.2.
Sorry?
88.2.
Yeah, but it was a, it was a year old. I mean, in, in, in recent history, we had a price on a senior center bus that was a year old. And we appropriated $1,000,000 plus that then up cost us $125,000. I'm just using that in reference to a price that was a year old. So my question, I guess, is how good is that number?
It bumped it to 100.
Yeah. But I'll, I'll defer to you, Mr. Board. John? John Craig?
You made the right decision, Sean.
Great, why?
Just a quick question to Marcelo. I know you're applying for the 100,000 and you're expecting 80%. Does the state in these situations ever say, you know, this is a nice proposal, but you're asking for 100, we're going to give you 40? Will they, will they proportion your request or would you get the whole thing? I mean, what are the odds on this?
In my experience with this particular grant, we have, we have received two grants previously through the Trails Program. And in both cases, they awarded what we requested.
Thank you.
John Craig?
Okay. So we're good on Article 21. Anything else, what else can we have up for this category, Joe?
The last thing is the EDC's request. I don't see anyone from EDC. However, I did exchange a series of emails today with Chair of the EDC, Dave Ross. As you know, Article 35, Center Brook Pedestrian Bridge Feasibility Study opposed, a feasibility study to cross Center Brook with pedestrian bridge. Estimate that came in from a scope of work provided by Howard Stein Hudson came in just a little bit under $35,000. So that's where the request of 35 was within the article. Back in November, the town also, and the town was one of many towns within the Commonwealth to receive economic development earmarks to support locally approved local rapid response plans. Representative Ray secured for his communities 125,000 for North Bridge, Rapton and Upton. I'm working with EDC and Town Planner to prepare paperwork to access that 125. And realistically, this project would be perfect within that scope of work. The pedestrian connection was proposed as part of that local rapid response plan. And so I have been talking to Dave Ross about maybe pulling the article and utilizing those funds to pursue it since it is in support of the economic plan for, for Upton Center. It would at least then free up that request when it was proposed to be used for, for retention. He did indicate by email support for pulling that article.
Yeah, I think it makes more sense. Obviously, why spend free cash if we have the appropriation already? At least have money that has been earmarked. So that makes better sense. But I would also say, this is like kind of an eye opener. We know what it costs to do just a bridge in the woods. And then now to a footbridge, I should say, to be constructed in the woods that's probably going to stand 15 feet. I had a chance to tour that playground. And when you look at that expansive water there, this is going to be a very expensive project. Sure, you know, it'll be beautiful if it's approved, but it's going to be very expensive to do. So I think people need to look ahead and understand that's going to be a $400,000 or $500,000 footbridge.
Where's the bridge to and from?
So basically, from the gravel lot that the town owns on Grove Street, across the brook to access land that is owned by BFW and coming in close to the community center of the town land.
So in relation to the baseball field, where's this footbridge coming?
It would be basically straight across, coming in.
Between the football, between the baseball field and the playground, basically on that sort of backside.
Right.
Sort of go up along the bank, up to, behind the playground, up towards the ball field, and then come in there.
Right. What the playground is, is what really squares up from the playground. You really have to be closer to 140 and playground sign to square up to our land. You don't actually square up to our land when you're at the lower playground. You know, at below the playground, I should say.
The footbridge is over, the baseball field, it's not ADI compliant, right? That's a dirt road. And I was involved with baseball for years, we used to fill it in. So that leads to.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it, it would design that you could, yeah. It's all, that's, that's, that's where, that's, that's where it would come out. It would go, it, they would have to design it, obviously. We all know what's over there. And I think that's what the funding is to study is exactly where you can get it in. There is ways to carry it further. So you're not like at the bottom of the ball, like it's not, it's not at the level of the lower ball field. You're kind of ramping it up around to the left so that it comes out almost at the level of the upper part of the playground, so that you're not like stuck at the bottom ball field. It's more like it would sort of work its way up. It has to be at a five degree angle to get to that upper section of the.
There's a lot of potential permutations as far as where up on that slope would be the best. And that's why, you know, the feasibility study was at first requested. When we're pulling together articles, December and January, we didn't have final contract language for this economic development earmark. That's been something that's come along really only in the last couple of weeks, finally getting that paperwork so we can start processing.
Can I ask a question?
Of course, please.
Can we expand the request feasibility study to include a wetlands delineation?
Yep. You're basically just expanding the scope of work and defining some initial delineation to, to assist in the environmental permitting that would be in support of an industrial connection.
All along Center Brook is the river act, and that's 200 foot setback on either side.
Yeah. And we're, but we're pulling that article, right? That article's not going to be in the war.
No, I'm asking him to.
And that's where the EDC is going to start discussing, because you could do it as that or they could decide less. Maybe that is a good use of some of the economic development earmark because it would directly support furthering the Upton Center plan.
The economic, yeah, development.
We're pulling that article ultimately.
Yes.
Okay. Obviously, EDC is in support of that, so we'll.
May I direct a question to the town manager? Is this bridge going to be accessible because for the people with disabilities? The reason I ask that is we keep talking about the dirt parking lot. And if it's going to be a dirt parking lot, we're going to have to pave portions of that thing and then bring it into wherever it's appropriate, up on the upper level of.
Thank you for at least emphasizing.
The area. So I'm assuming it's going to be accessible, but there's going to be more work in paving a parking lot also.
As part of the feasibility study, we'd identify as far as what would be required, accessibility requirements currently. There's an issue with even the ball fields at BFW not being handicap accessible. So that's all potentially within the scope of what the feasibility would, study would look like. As it relates then to dealing with the gravel lot and what that ends up being, my understanding of that is something on the, that's in front of EDC as far as trying to implement recommendations of the Town Center Plan.
If I may, I look at this, the only way you're going to get somebody to buy into this, you've already put out two RFPs with no responses. You want to, you want to get somebody to come in here and spend the fortune to put up a new building to work for your development. But he's got to, he's got to figure out what he can do there. Because as more he points out, you're in 200 feet of the river. Okay? I would like to prefer that initial efforts be spent at delineating the wetlands. Because whatever this individual, who this phantom individual may be that's going to develop up there, the first thing he's going to have to do is find out where the wetlands are. And if, if, I guess, it seems to me that would be more beneficial for us to make the project more desirable to do if the guy, if the potential developer knows what he's dealing with before he even starts. I know it's not germane to this footbridge.
It is not.
But in respect, it is, because that footbridge is going to be within the 200 foot buffer.
Is that crossing the Center Brook? I guess it does.
It spins off into a lot of other questions, right? It actually asks more questions than it answers. Because now you have to, then you get into constructing something that's going to be partially, definitely crossing wetlands. Now it's whether.
They're in the river. Well, they have to determine, EPA has to come in and determine the, you know, where about the river act, where you can build and where you can't.
I'm required. So if you're pulling the article, so all things that can be addressed to, who mentioned all this to Dave Ross, is that going through you?
Yes. And, and all, just frankly, all the stuff that was just discussed, it's already had communicated, not communicated, but had conversation with EDC on lining all these things up.
And this will be, right, there's going to be a contractor, there's going to be a scope of work. So there's something that, as you mentioned, when it comes forward in June, July, August, whenever that is, you can figure out the rest of that then.
What's next?
Okay. The next thing was basically that, following these articles, and I just put these in here because we can fly through. Didn't know if the board or finance committee had any questions on Articles 2, 3, 8, 9, 10, and 39. You know, Article 2 prior bill, that's extremely straightforward. It was just 1,200 with cable. Previously, I've mentioned to the board, it's a document separate from ThinkCom as far as Article 3, which is a transfer of $7,000 for unpaid elected stipends from FY22. Just yell out if anyone has any questions.
Are these raisins appropriate? Two and three raisins appropriate?
Two is from the PAG account.
In fact, that's a separate money that they get from job.
Right. It's, it's, it's a separate account. So it's not, it's coming directly out of that public access.
Almost like a retained earnings.
Right.
But I believe, with all due respect, Mr. Manager, you require 9/10 spoken, not 4/10.
Nonpaid bill.
Unpaid bills from a practice group year requiring 9/10 spoken.
9/10s?
9/10s. Basically, what it says is, if it's not, if it's not unanimous, we're going to count it.
So all verified because town council did review. And I thought, I thought 9/10s was special town meeting, not annual, but.
Go ahead, Kenny.
Joe, you're correct. So special town meeting, it's 9/10s, 4/5ths at the annual town meeting. That's what I recall from the master of laws.
Thank you.
Far as the articles that are here before us, Brett, you had asked if there's any, or Joe, somebody asked about articles.
The same comment I always make.
We're going to go through all of them. So I just want to make sure we're, no one's saying anything.
I just want to make sure if there was a question.
The three of us are going to go through everything in the morning, make sure it's in. Want to pull out?
Okay.
Article 8, we have, we standard, we have a standard article that basically appropriates about 70,000. Looking for a bump up of that to cover for capital expenditures really associated with this room to try to once and for all resolve utilizing this room as a, essentially a meeting room studio to correct sound, to correct layout, to make this a little bit more productive. Article 9, the town has a financial policy that identifies that we maintain stabilization fund set at 10%. To maintain that 10%, it requires 160,613 coming from free cash to go into that stabilization account. Article 10, we have an existing capital stabilization fund balance, current balance right now is 5,783. Kenny and I are recommending that we put 20,000 into that. An example was actually what we just experienced in the fall where if we did not get free cash, and I'm going to say right after that, we are always going to have free cash certified way in advance of any town meeting. But this, if we had money in this article, we didn't need to even think about hitting stabilization. And that it is recommended often by DOR to have separate capital stabilization outside of your general stabilization. So proposing that. And then the last article is, and this will require going in front of the planning board for, for a public hearing because it is a zoning bylaw change, increasing the number of members from three to five on the ZDA. So I don't know if anyone had any questions on, on those before then we took up this joint meeting.
I just have a question on Article 10. I thought we spent down capital stabilization of $5,000 because we didn't think we needed to have separate stabilization funds. So what you're explaining is different than the reason why we spent it down. We, we used it on articles last year's, I don't know when it was, but we did it for a very opposite reason that you're mentioning. So I don't know if Kenny has the, because we definitely spent it down. So we, we kept it at five, we had that random number. So there was a balance, but we didn't want to close it out. We didn't want to use it all. But so adding money into it now just goes against what we had.
And, and, I mean, not to, not to sort of make light of it. You know, I don't know what, you know, decisions were made or what Derek's view of it. I've, my experience coming from various other communities is that it's highly recommended to have capital stabilization accounts. You don't want to touch your stabilization account except for dire need. So for example, last year, we ran the risk of not having free cash certified. We had deferred capital expenses like a police cruiser, some other items. And we were contemplating using stabilization because we didn't have free cash certified. Now, a week before town meeting, free cash was certified. We didn't have to worry about that, appropriate that. If we had a stabilization account, we would have just taken directly for that, maintained our recommended by DOR percentage for stabilization. And that's how a lot of towns view utilizing stabilization funds. They'll also create special purpose stabilization accounts. So you take money like you may get from marijuana growth facilities, which we should hopefully get soon, put that into dedicated accounts so it's not being relied on in your operating budget as revenue. So then you can do specific projects. And if the money goes away, then you don't have to worry about it really hitting your bottom line. Towns will use this to, to plan for like other capital expenses because we don't know from one year to the other where our free cash is going to be. So I definitely have a different perspective on it. I, I don't know what the conversations around here were or with Kenny and Derek. That's just my, my viewpoint.
It all makes sense. I just wanted to, it doesn't sound like anyone just mentioned it to you before. We definitely spent it down.
I'm aware of that we spent down. I'm aware of it spent down.
Yeah, we did. And let me just kind of go backwards and bridge the gap between what you're saying. You are correct. We, the argument, and it was raised, me being one person, but also other people on town meeting floor was you take a financial policy and you want to have 10%, which we've done. Now, you also have this phantom money that's floating out there in capital stabilization. I'm going to call it phantom money because it sat at $255,000, I'll just say. It sat there in that fashion for untouched for a dozen years. Well, there were some complaints and it was decided we're going to have one stabilization account. So the idea was to spend it down. Like you say, it's still kind of sitting there pseudo with $5,500 in. But now the problem is if you have a 10% financial reserve policy and you're going to have 10% stabilization, now you have all this other money sitting in capital state. So, you know, my opinion is, we made a decision a few years ago. Let's not waffle on the decision. Keep it down, leave it there for future generations, but leave it at $5,500.
When somebody says to me stabilization, I think of stabilization. Somebody says capital stabilization, I'm thinking about capital. Let's go back a few years. Let's go back a few years. When we, I forget how many years ago, we had an override for the school. And then Menden didn't do it, the school caved in, and we had already appropriated the money. People decided at the time to create a school stabilization account. So that going forward, if we had an issue, we could take it right there. The fallacy, and I, back then, I, I was always of the opinion, the best thing to do with that money is do an underwrite for that amount of money. Because what eventually happened is that money, which, which the override went for a year, the first year of their money said had to be for the school because that was the purpose of the account. the purpose of the account, and ensuing years, it can go anywhere. So this school stabilization account, after five or six years, I don't remember exact, I don't want to see you around then and on, but all of a sudden it got rolled into the, it got rolled into general stabilization, okay? So each of these accounts is protected by a 2/3 vote. But this, I just think we're probably better off if we follow this plan, okay, we have stabilization, and Steve, you and I can have this conversation ad nauseam, is there a difference between stabilization and capital stabilization? You know, I don't know.
The way we run our government, there is not, there is no difference, no difference at all. And remember one other thing, again, we just got the update, we're sitting on $1.7 million in CPC funds, and Rena Richard addressed the board three years ago, and she told us, one thing with CPC is it can be used short term to fund your budget, you have to replenish it. But if you look at the dollars that this town is sitting on, you know, we're killing a lot of things. Stabilization, money sitting in a bank account for the enrichment of the government is not helping your small town economy. It's killing, when I say killing, it's killing your small town economy.
Does it count towards 10%?
Yes, it does.
Kenny, go ahead Kenny.
I just wanted to add through the chair to Joe's point, so the, the general stabilization, that's more of a rainy day fund, and this is discussions that we had with S&amp;P when we had the refunding, and then also for the community center. They do look at it very differently, so like a capital stabilization, that would be for capital items, so there, you know, we do need, we do have a capital need, there are monies, there's funds set aside if we do need that. But they are very, you know, they are very different. However, in the future, if we ever did want to make that change, if we wanted to divert more funds into capital, if we want a well-defined, we could, if we wanted to do that, but they are for very different purposes. Because you can have, you can have multiple stabilization accounts, you know, if you want to, for a designated purpose. So I just wanted to add, so they are very different.
So Kenny, hold on one second now, we've got a, we've got $160,000 going to stabilization. If that 160 is approved and it goes into stabilization, what will be the balance of the stabilization fund after the 160?
That balance will be, so it's 10% of the fiscal year '23 general fund budget, so it will be 2 million, 2.7 million.
That would be balance.
That's 10% of our operating budget for fiscal year '23.
Okay, so now your Capital 200 is another 200,000 on top of your 10% that we're already holding.
Correct.
Again, I don't like it, I don't care what S&amp;P says, the pulse of this community tells me, bad policy. S&amp;P, you, the 10 people sitting behind you can tell me it's a good idea, it's lousy. To have 10% in stabilization and then stick another 200,000 in capital, it's ridiculous.
What's the policy for the capital stabilization? Is there a target for capital stabilization separate from the 10% in stabilization?
I don't believe we'd have that, I mean, that's something that I, you know, we should develop, you know, we should develop a policy for stabilization as far as, as a balance. I know, I know some communities, they really tend, they typically don't have a percentage, typically they try to put as much as they can into the account, knowing that they have a capital plan, and usually that capital plan, the dollar amount, the demand, the need is much greater than what's in the fund. So, you know, typically, that's what I typically see, it's what, it's the amount that you can afford to put in there, knowing that the need is much greater, and then you look at the plan and try to figure out what, what can you fund, what can you afford in that plan.
And I do see that Dan Lazaris from our capital budget committee has a comment or a question, so I definitely want to get to that and recognize Dan, but I think that's part and parcel of the challenge we're having, right? We're debating something that there's no policy on, so I think that it makes sense for us to try to come up with a collective policy, a target, and, and an approach to use these different funds. We have a capital plan that's in place, we've got about, I don't know, five, six, seven things that are up for capital that we're funding out of free cash that don't show up in the capital state, in the capital plan. So we've got a capital plan, we've got a warrant that has items on it that are capital items, that aren't in a capital plan, that we're paying for out of free cash, we're putting $200,000 into a capital stabilization account, and we have no sort of rhyme or reason to how we're doing all this. So it seems like there's an opportunity to align some of that, but I've got a lot of pensive faces here, but I'll start with Dan since you raised your hand.
Yeah, thanks Brett. There is a draft capital plan that's on the capital budget committee website, I'm going to go back to what Kenny said a few meetings back, which is the state DLS is telling us 3, 5% of our budget should be capital, we're going to fall below 1% this coming year, so we're really not doing that while planning long-term capital. When it comes to, when it comes to stabilization, I think the bigger issue, there's no target that I'm aware of from that draft policy, and that policy that was put together a couple years ago by capital came right from, you know, the community compact program and best practices, so it is pretty current, and it actually was not even a year old when we took it and adapted it for the community as a draft planning guideline. As it relates to stabilization, I think we have two exact situations this year that are exactly what you should have a capital stabilization account for, which is, you got to go and do some work at the town hall with plumbing and some building services, same thing going on at the fire station that's almost 20 years old with heating systems and, and such. That's the kind of stuff where you have essentially things that are like a capital expense, they're really just an expense because it's just replacing something that you already own, but that would be a good example of how you could keep a certain target of that based on some planning aside for those kinds of expenses, and not have to go dragging out a raisin appropriate or free cash drawdowns for things like that. So I think that's what we probably should be having a more collective discussion about capital with finance and then through the board in that, in that format.
Thank you.
I make Rick McGuire come into the chair. As a member of the capital committee, we ended up studying the DLS recommendations, and they benchmarked a number of communities. And I'm going to put this out there because this was their benchmark, they said on free cash, you should be between 3 and 5%. They said for stable, general stabilization fund, it would be a minimum of 5% up to generally a max of 10%. Back three or four years ago, we went in there and we adopted a financial plan, and that financial plan said we're going to keep a minimum of 10% in general stabilization, let remind everyone why we did that. That was so that we would get a better discount rate when it came to financing the community center. Now, and that benchmark, the other thing that happened is looking at communities that were considered best practices, general stabilization was generally running between 5 and 7%, some communities had 10, but if they had 5 or 7, they had a capital stabilization fund, so that in stabilization, whether you called it capital stabilization, or whether you call it financial, the general stabilization, it ended up being about 10%. Other communities went in there and said, okay, for a capital stabilization, we know we have to buy cruisers every year. So they had a cruiser stabilization fund, maybe 1 or 2% of the budget. So you have flexibility, but we ended up saying that we're going to keep in that financial policy plan, 10% is a minimum. Most communities don't do that, they do 5 to 7, we compared a number of communities. Then they create a capital stabilization. We do have a lot of money sitting in various funds that we are catch rich in this community.
Because you don't want to spend it on studying water waste, so just leave it in the account instead of using it.
I was just going to say, before we get too far off this, I was just going to say, the 3 to 5%, somebody mentioned we are, aren't, I don't know if I heard that correctly, but this particular year, we've spent an enormous amount of money between dump trucks and ambulances, police cruisers and fire chiefs cars.
Lawn mowers.
Well, well, lawnmowers is another one, sure. Forgetting about the wing mower, but we're way, way, I mean, there's no way, if somebody's not adding correctly, I'll be glad to throw my two cents, and anybody who wants to pen to paper, I like numbers, but there's no way we're falling short on capital investment in this town, no way. Not in the last two years, that's for darn sure. I mean, you got to count everything, you got to remember, we buy a new police cruiser every year, that's capital. You know, we buy dump trucks, how many one-ton dump trucks have we bought in the last three years?
Any other questions on this one?
No, I was, my comment would be to my friend, Mr. Foster over here, and I sat in on that barn call on the building over here, as did Mrs. Bonal. And I, I admit that the standard in boards was extremely impressed with the way, the way we were conducting business, and as an indicator of that, I would say that the rating that they have, AA plus, was reflective of that. And I don't, I don't know how much more we have to do, Ken, to bring it up to AAA. I'd like to see that. And again, as Mr. McGuire alluded to, we had a pretty good rate on that note for the community center. And one other issue, if we had, if we did not have these stabilization accounts, or some of this free cash, if you had to go to the taxpayer every time you wanted to buy a dump truck, or a 10-wheeler, or a lawn mower, or some of these things, or an ambulance, or something like that, if you had to go to the taxpayer every time you wanted one of these things, you'd never get it. You'd never get it.
We're going to discuss all the articles after these guys leave, so do you have anything else for 2, 3, 8, 9, 10, and 39 as the finance committee? Because if you're done with that, then you guys can go and we'll finish up our warrant review for all the other articles.
We're restricting our ability to use the money to 2/3 instead of using it as free cash, which is just a majority. So I think that had something to do with how we came to the conclusion to spend it down, so I'm all for earmarking things and doing things, but there were reasons why we did it before, and I, I don't recall what they were, but there were definitely reasons why we did what we did, so then changing is fine, you're coming with a different view on it, which is good, but we're earmarking it, and then we're forcing it to be 2/3, which is closer to what you're saying of, now you got to get the support, 2/3 support for a one-ton dump truck that may or may not get free cash, you're going to get that.
I mean, I very, I have not seen many instances where there is a difference between getting 50% and 2/3 when it comes to capital, zoning, totally different issue. But we are not going to have 1.3 million dollars in free cash next year, and there's the potential that this is going to go down. I'm trying to be.
3.1.
Yeah, didn't I say 3.1?
You said 1.3.
Oh, I'm sorry. Reverse those, that may be next year. But, I mean, realistically, I am concerned and thinking about long-term stability, and yeah, we have to be able to budget our free cash, but the things we can't control is the general economy, receipts, how that impacts us. And one of the ways to, to control that, because, and one of the things is, I do want to update the comprehensive capital plan, right now, the most up-to-date are spreadsheets, but it doesn't say the why, doesn't say the how, it's, if, the old plan has not been updated, and that's one of the things this coming year I want to be able to do, so that then we can identify what we're looking up the next 10 years, provide that justification, then that plugs into why you then would, we'd use a capital stabilization account, and then how you could use it because we have something, we need a new vehicle, and we are then low in free cash, we're then borrowing, and we don't want to have to do that. So, understand, it's, it's the one thing I thought I have, just throwing that grenade in the room and just seeing what, what the, the impact is.
I know. So. I know you keep raising your hand Kenny, we're trying to wrap this thing up, what do you got?
I just wanted to, to add that, you know, paying these items from a capital stabilization or free cash, I think Joe just talked about that, we're not paying interest. I mean, we're not going out and we're not borrowing for this, I mean, we got a great rate with the, with the community center, 1.86. The last conversation I had with our FA, our financial advisor from Unit Bank, you know, rates are about 5%. So, you know, as you can see, you know, the town has saved a lot of interest by not, you know, but just by paying cash and not borrowing for this, so I just wanted to let you know the importance of having free cash and having stabilization, and having the ability of paying cash versus borrowing and paying interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from FinCom?
Article 39, there's no financial impact, so.
2, 3, 8, 9, 10, 39, you guys all set with all those? 10 was the one we were just talking about.
We talked about, we talked about 2, 3, 8, we talked about all.
Okay, so you're all set?
I was on the way.
All right, great. Let you adjourn.
All right, so, anything else, finance committee? I don't.
I don't have anything else either.
So, can I wrap this up before we, so, just to, just to start the finance committee goes, we'll take a motion to adjourn at, let's call it 9:46, 7:40, 47? Oh, you want to talk about that, that's fine.
Yeah, you should at least address it.
No, this was, this was about in support of 6C, which is updated on FY24 budget. I had hoped to have the town manager's recommended budget done so that you could have it printed out today. We're just proofreading final version, Kenny sent over some Word documents that we can insert, so my goal is to be able to have it printed out so that you can have it for your meeting. That's the department narrative, that's the individual budget, department chiefs. One of the main things is that on Monday, we had that sizable reduction in the assessment from Mendenup and Regional School District that reduced what they had indicated their assessment, reduced it by 140,000, $114,000. I had proposed taking 100 of that, putting that into paving under the operating budget, as well as then still continuing with that town meeting article, but rather than 280,000 from free cash for paving, doing 180. And then in the fall, revisiting because we'll have updated state budget numbers that should be approved, we'll have new growth associated with the railroad that the accessory department is working on, and we'll have a better handle that then we can maybe hopefully swap out that, bring that back within the operating budget. So that's what that memo details, and also details, there was questions on staffing, indicated over the 10 years where that increase in staffing was associated. Also, I highlighted what the top five drivers are in the bucket, you know, schools, pension, retirement, trash, library increase, that actually, you add all those up, that is above what the difference between FY23 and FY24 is, meaning that through the rest of the budget, we have reduced costs to ultimately reduce what those appropriations were. So I put together what those, those budget drivers were, so I put together that memo, sort of outlining those things, you have the cover sheet, which is a summary of the whole budget, look for the town manager's budget recommendation tomorrow, and if you have any questions, email, office.
We talked at like noon yesterday, and you banged all that out in 24 hours, so good job.
Joe's going to pull on my, tonight.
It will be by the time we adjourn, pretty much.
I'd say Sandy was banging it out a lot of it.
Thank you Sandy.
And Kenny.
Thank you Kenny, he probably not.
Dr. and Dr. Rich Patrick will be here tomorrow night to present their very interesting budget, oh, documents, the school budget, MURSCs has already been voted, and, and, so you're not going to, you can't know anything about that. The BBT budget will be voted Thursday night, I don't see any changes on what Dr. Patriss is going to say. So you're cordially invited, and you'll pop in on the, on the notice, so if you have nothing.
What did you say they're presenting?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow.
I'm a station. So, having said that, finance committee has a little more business, we'll institute a motion to adjourn. All Friday, aye.
Rick McGuire, Rick McGuire, aye.
Tom Craig, aye.
Done.
Our fun starts.
Our fun starts. This will be, I think we're in pretty good shape here. So I was able to multicast. And I think the easiest way to do this will be to just sort of, three of the administrative ones are administrative. So I have those written down, right? Like one, Article one is reports. Two is prior year bills. Three is prior year elected board stipends. Four is operating budget. Five is water enterprise. Six is wastewater enterprise. Seven is revolving fund spending limits. Do we, are you good with those?
Yes.
Yeah. We've got Upton Cable Fund, Chapter 90 Acceptance, Snow and Ice, CPA Fund Transfers, and Administrative Transfers, the Town Hall Bond from CPC, the $308 ride share. So that's like Article 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 12, 14, 16, ABC, and 36. But I think those we can sort of just say like, yeah, those are fine. And then the ones that I think are, that I know we want to talk about are the capital stabilization, which I think we want to discuss. I don't know if we want to talk about nine. O P A B is the $100,000. 250 is roads construction. So what are the ones that you guys know we want to talk about? I assume, I know it's nine and 10, which are the stabilization ones.
Um, I think you have the one more.
20 and 20, right. You wanted to talk about the management plan for Pratt and Mill Pond. We wanted to talk about the Warren Street Bridge one.
Probably talk about the roadside mower and the other.
Roadside mower, yeah. There's a $12,000 mower.
Yeah, there's another $12,000.
About that one too, yeah.
This will be 150,000. The roadside.
You staying for the rest of this meeting too?
Public meeting, sure.
It's absolutely a public meeting. I'll let you know when you're recognized. So Article.
I agree with you anyway.
Exactly. Article 11 is O P A B. Do we want to talk about O P A B or are we good with the 100,000?
If I, yeah, if I remember correctly, did we take that out of?
Operation.
Yeah, we took it out of the operational side and we moved it over. So yes, I'm fine.
That one's okay. All right, the $5,000 to the Conservation Fund. That's Article 15.
I think that's more.
Standard, okay.
I think that's pretty much standard.
All right. The, I want to talk about the fire and police paving, so we'll talk about that one. We'll talk about roads construction. The ramp replacement for the police station, that's part of like the grant one. I think that would be, this is the, any type access ramp.
Yeah.
Some other funds they were looking at you.
This was free cash. We have ADA improvements, but that's through a grant, but it's not including the grant.
Oh, it doesn't include that ramp?
Okay.
So the ramp is straight up free cash, 30,000.
50. Police station, so 23 is for 50,000?
Yep.
I'm going to open up my other tab. Yeah, I don't have all the.
All right, so we'll talk about that one. Do we want to talk about the DPW trucks, the one ton and Dennis's new truck? And the roadside mower for $150,000?
Now, yes, I would say we should discuss those.
All right. All right, so we'll probably go through these then one at a time. Dog bylaw, we'll talk about that too. Okay.
I think we're good with the dog by law, right?
You're good with the dog? Okay, we'll just sit that on there. All right, so we'll check that one on. Z B A going from three to five.
I'm good with that, too.
I'm good with that.
You're good with that? Okay, we'll do that on there. Great, all right.
I don't know if we'll be able to fill five seats, but.
I, well, it'll be interesting to see. Let's see. Classification Income Plan, da, 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 da. Okay. All right, good. So I think that's, I think we've, we're in a good spot here. So why don't we start with $160,000, $613, sorry, $160,000, $613 transfer to stabilization, Article nine.
You know how I feel about that. Nothing's going to change.
And you know how I feel.
That also is not going to change.
No on nine and I'm a no on 10.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a yes.
I'm a yes on two of them.
I'm a yes on nine and yes on 10.
Flush with cash.
Flush with cash. Okay, so.
Tripling our local economy, chasing these little businesses out of town. Just lost another one in the plaza.
How do you do that when you spend it free cash? How are you telling them chasing business?
You're choking on them. I'm telling you exactly how. Choking them, you're taking it out of circulation. That money should be in the people's hands, spending it small businesses. I guess I didn't hear that. Hit that little.
Yes, we are. That's what we're discussing and voting on. Yeah, okay, so.
Like two out of three gets the majority.
Yeah, so nine and 10, well, good, good.
Article 11.
11, 11 is O P A B.
Yeah.
That's the $100,000.
You agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Let's see. Okay, and then the $280,000 roads construction, which is now $100,000 from.
18.
18.
$100,000 is going to be an operating budget. 180 is going to be from free cash.
Right, but in that article.
Yeah.
It's only going to be the 180 because we've already moved the 100 into the budget.
Into operating, okay. 180 on roads for Article 13?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, love it.
I agree with that.
Fire and police paving, $180,000 for driveway paving.
We have some.
I'm a no, I take that in the fall, just because we're very lean on paving and I mentioned last time. The residents are going to see relatively small investment in our roads. So I think it does, myself and what I'm hearing from my residents, they're not, they're not liking that.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. So I'm also a no on that one.
And just for clarification, because I thought I heard like waiting until the fall for that to revisit. So it's not a no, no, it's let's wait to discuss and potentially put it on the warrant for the fall.
Yeah, I just.
Well, I had heard Steve at the last meeting say that, you know, fire station parking lot was quite bad.
Yeah, I think we revisit that in the fall. I think.
Fall, I'm a yes.
Be cheering for it.
And the, my reluctance is, you know, I understand the need. When we have articles right next to each other, we're going to spend $180,000 to pave and take care of all of the roads in Upton. And then we're going to spend $180,000 to pave two driveways that I can go look at myself and go to the layperson. I'm not an engineer. I understand Dennis, everything Dennis said about shear cracking and the base and having to do full depth reclamation and not like, I totally get all that. I just think that deferring something for a little while is going to be okay. And that seems like a thing that can, can wait. Police station ramp replacement, we just said was $50,000. Any?
How many yes?
Yeah, it's an ADA issue, 50,000. Again, I personally, I looked at the ramp. I thought it was good for another couple of years, but I'll defer to.
Where did the need come from on that one? Joe, is it just?
See, I know Chief Bradley and Dennis are still on. We were looking at it yesterday and looking underneath that there is cracking and the asphalt is sort of pulled away from underneath. So you do have rebar that is starting to be exposed. They had, I think if memory serves, Dennis indicated a couple of years ago, they had to cut out sections of the railing to then re-anchor it because it was rotting from the metal handrails. So, yeah, it's been on the spread, the capital budget spreadsheet for the last couple of years.
Okay, so I'm a yes on that one. G U R, Consultant Services, this is the $25,000. We're going to try to get recouped, but we want to put it in here.
Right.
I'm good.
Okay. $125,000 one ton truck replacement. This is a dump truck.
Sounds awful expensive to me. We just bought one when we took over the cemetery for parks. I mean, I'd like to kick some of these articles to the ball. And we're 39 articles deep. I know we've waited out half a dozen, but.
That one's for the cemetery, though. This one's for the highway, then?
Yeah, we bought one for highway, right, for Dennis being on board as well. So I know we bought two one ton dumps in the last, how many years? Five years. It's your decision.
All right, we'll skip that one for now. I can rest my brain. $65,000 for Dennis truck replacement. This is a new director's SUV.
This is the director's vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think his, if I remember correctly, the article, he's got almost 150,000 miles on his.
Yeah.
So and I think it's fairly, I don't remember that being replaced in my tenure, so I would say that vehicle is probably due.
Okay, all right, so we're good on that one. Roadside mower, $150,000. This is the one where we're going to save money over six years. It's going to pay for itself. He's been asking for it for six years and we always talk about it. I think we bought it and we didn't actually. Questions on this one?
Well, I know the gentleman that did roadside mowing before, he didn't do it last year and he's not going to do it this year.
Yeah. Okay.
You hire outside companies, you know what they charge.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just like to see this outsourced. Just, I think anytime you take on new projects and new scope of work, essentially in the long run, you know, you're raising taxes. And I think that for repairs on a mower, I look at these side roads, I drive them all, these back roads, there's an awful lot of rock and tree on the side of the road. So that's pretty hazardous. That's one project I feel we should outsource.
Okay.
I feel a lot better about buying one more dump truck and one less tractor, but that's up to your, your decision.
All right. This is going to be exciting. $12,000 mower. Yes, no?
I'm a no on that.
Yes, I knew that this was great. This is going to be so fun. $250,000, $250,000 water sand filtration refurbishment.
It's coming out of the Enterprise Fund?
Yes. Yep.
You want to keep your water clean.
Right.
All right, we're all for that one. Good. 30 is the water tank vaults and repairs, which is $120,000. Same on that one?
I'm sorry.
This is $120,000 for the water tank, the vaults and making repairs there and leaking and things like that. Guys can get in there. Scanner plotter for Town Hall, which is how many thousand?
Uh, it was requested or was removed, reduced down to 24,500.
24,500 for the scanner plotter? Yes.
Okay with that.
Okay. $10,000 for Board of Assessor Recertification.
Oh, yes.
Seems obligatory. $40,000 for the classification and comp plan update.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Dogs are good, that's good. We've got.
I don't necessarily like the timing of that one either, but I understand the necessity of it.
Yeah, okay. And then 40 and 41 are citizens petitions, so we don't have to discuss those. So let's go back to 21, which was the $120,000 article for Warren Street Bridge.
Warren Street.
Warren, sorry, not Warren Street, Warren Brook.
Okay.
Sorry, Warren Brook, yeah, I put a Brook on Warren Street.
I would be a yes on that only because they have been good about fulfilling their commitment to getting grants on all the things that they want. So I made a yes on that.
All right, I'll go along with that. Again, I'm not crazy about the timing, but.
Yeah.
If there's an opportunity to recuperate some of those dollars.
Just a grant. Question as far as like if they don't get the grant. Because I mean, you can also always in the motion, you can then condition it.
Is there, is it? The way it is, right? Is there questions about how it's written?
No, I just wanted to make sure that it doesn't say that that this article is contingent on grant funding. It's just it's 120. I'm just trying to figure out, so that lining things up. Is there a view of things different? Like if the grant isn't obtained, does that change the calculus from recommendation of the board? Not on whether it should be on the warrant, but.
Contingent on the grant?
Right.
I mean, I don't think we're going to know, right?
Yeah.
So I think we have to just.
Let people vote on it.
Yeah, I think so.
So they can't spend the money until after July 1st anyways.
Right, right. But I'm also thinking about some of these motions at the same time and what that looks like. Because right now, the article would be just to appropriate from C B C and it would be up to, on Town Meeting Board to decide whether or not, or recommendation of FinCom, whether or not it's, it's motions for contingent on getting the grant.
You type two P A. Contingent, so you come.
It's just a process question. I thought C B C voted to put something on the warrant. They can vote to do something on the warrant, then you guys don't put it on the warrant, do they?
Yes.
I honestly thought C B C just kind of forward and say we'd like to put this on the board. I was asking a serious question. I thought that that's what.
Giving you a serious answer. You're welcome. Article, so we're good on 21, on 20, which is the Phase Two Management Plan for Pratt and Mill Pond. I think, you know.
I'm a no.
Here are no on that.
I'm a no.
Here are no, all right. So we're going to pull 20.
Again, timing issue. I think that's something we beat the topic up pretty good. I think come back in November, look at that.
Some timing estimates.
All right, so 20 is gone. All right, so the only things we have left.
And we're pulling the 35 one and going with the 125.
Our 35 is scratched as well, right?
Yeah, 31 is scratched, 35 is scratched, and 37 is scratched.
No, I mean, the, on the Center for a Bridge.
Yeah, that pulled out, that's gone, yeah.
Can I get you two to agree to expand the feasibility study to include the water delineation?
Yeah, can we have that discussion another time? Because I don't know what that is exactly. I know what delineation is, I know what the plan is, I just don't know what we're handing it on.
So technically, when, and just two seconds, when the E D C works on finalizing what they want to do for the earmark, that's coming in front of the board. They don't, because they're, they provide recommendations to you.
Right.
The board's going to have to vote to support that because they're, we're going to get a contract from the state for that earmark and it's going to identify all the things. So once they go through and they say, here's what we think, they're going to have to come in front of the board for a final. That's when we can have that discussion.
Okay.
So Joe, we have to execute that contract and we'll add input into that. So we should be able to get a better chance to really dissect that.
How do you know what you can build until you find out what you can build?
I agree with you, yes. I think it's, it's a little dicey there.
I got ideas. Now, I like that. I like definitive.
So I'm a yes on the $125,000 one ton truck replacement, the $65,000 for Dennis, who said that was fine. And the roadside mower is fine. And $12,000 mower. So the only ones we're taking out, so we've got the majority, not a unanimous on nine and 10. That's Brett and Maureen are yes on nine and 10. Steve's a no. Maureen's a yes on 22. Steve and Brett are no's. That's the paving. And then Steve is no on 25, 20, 25, which is the one ton truck, 27, which was the roadside mower, and 28, which was the $12,000 mower.
I'm good with the 12,000.
You're good with the 12, okay.
I kind of was looking at those three articles.
As one thing.
Seeing what was going to give.
Gotcha, okay.
But I'm okay on that.
Okay, okay. You got what you need?
Yeah, I'm going to use your cheat sheet because I don't.
You're going to use my cheat sheet, okay.
You're not going to be able to read his cheat sheet.
No, I got it, yeah. I'm going to take a picture of this and send it to you, yeah. No, I've, I've got the summary, so, okay. All right, anything else that you guys want to talk about on the warrant?
I don't think so. I think we've dissected it pretty much and I think we'll have another, we'll probably have one more discussion before we, one more public discussion anyways before the warrant, so.
Do you want to motion on them?
Um, let's see.
Probably two more, actually.
We've got to close the warrant, too.
We get two. Well, the warrant's closed already.
One motion, two. We motioned to open it. We didn't motion to close it.
That was one motion to open it and close.
Immediately close after.
Yeah.
Was the motion, yeah.
No, but I had to motion to place the article.
Yeah, I made sure it was in there. I didn't.
Exactly. Um.
Gotta stop the floodgate of warrants.
Yeah, exactly. That's.
I wanna say unprecedented, but uncomfortable.
It's a lot.
Pull the numbers, say, just leave them, just, you just get numbers.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we want to, uh, motion for, right, like, executing the warrant and putting these, all, all these on there? Do we, or did what we do cover that?
Um, execution of the warrant would be a separate motion that then, once we have that final and, and giving authorization to sign, so that would be a public meeting.
Okay, so everything's all set with all the articles?
As long, as long as, um, if, if the vote of the board was to, um, uh, either place all the articles except for these on the warrant. Or to remove these articles from the warrant as discussed, um, then that will allow us to finalize the, the town meeting warrant.
So what do you?
Um, if you, if it's easier to basically identify the articles that the board did not want, so Article, um.
Twenty-two and twenty. So twenty-two is the fire and police paving.
Yep.
Okay. Twenty is the Pratt and Mill Pond Community Preservation Funds. So we pulled that one.
Yep.
And.
Thirty-five is.
Well, thirty-one, thirty-five and thirty-seven are already done. So the only, the only ones we just added to that whole list are twenty-two, which is the fire and police paving. And twenty, which is the Pratt and Mill Pond study.
So you're pulling five articles?
One, two, three, four, five, thirty-one, thirty-five, thirty-seven, twenty-two and twenty. Yep. Yep.
Twenty-two, twenty, thirty-one, thirty-five and what was the?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Yep. I didn't even.
And you have to take the two citizens petitions anyway.
Yeah. We don't even deal with.
Okay.
So, and, and just on it, just because the citizens, um, the sponsors and citizens petitions ask, is it typical for the sponsors of those citizens petitions to present their articles in front of the selectmen? Or, I mean, it might be, it sounds like it wasn't, so I just don't know what was con, custom there.
Yeah, no, they haven't before. I think we've been, you know, we tried, we try to help folks just to make sure that like they don't just get totally, you know. When they, right, exactly. Like we don't have to show up and have some technicality sort of say, oh geez, well, you're kind of screwed, right? Like we wanna honor the intent of what people are trying to do, so.
One of them is alien by law change, which requires public care from any where they.
Yes.
So anything that gets changed, even if the board didn't recommend that.
Yes.
That's, that's a separate, that's what it's possible. Okay.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, I think we, we did have probably one or two instances where citizens petitions did come before the board and present, but I think for the most part, it's, it's basically. If someone had a strong feeling about it one way or the other.
Yeah.
Otherwise they don't need to.
Yep, yeah, or if we saw something that was like, oh, wait, that's not gonna, that doesn't, it's not gonna work.
Bless your hand.
Close the stand on its own.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, shall I?
That was great.
No, you have to pour a second.
You wanna hit me with this and you should. This is why our meetings shouldn't go until ten fifteen, because I get punchy with the gal. All right, if there's nothing else, I will take a motion.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Well, hold on one second then.
Uh-oh.
Don't second it.
No, we need to motion the warrant. Didn't Joe say that we need to actually motion that we are removing those files?
Yes.
Okay, so we do wanna get that?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
Okay, for some reason I thought you already.
I'm a diva, I'm telling you.
Not the, I'm formal.
Not someone's, someone's.
So I'm just gonna make a motion that we're gonna remove those articles from the warrant. Okay. I'd make a motion that the board of selectmen vote to remove Articles twenty, twenty-two, thirty-one, thirty-five and thirty-seven.
And if I may, then as a friendly amendment, add, um, and renumber accordingly.
And renumber, um, the remaining articles accordingly.
That's the disassest?
With the two thousand twenty-four warrant.
It's not final until you sign and you post it.
That's right. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action.
Okay, no.
Go ahead.
Can't you just do file, save as, renumber? Can't you just do file, save as, renumber?
And then, no, I don't mean it that way. It's per discussion. We've changed all the numbers on past warrants instead of removing them. And it just becomes very complicated because the draft warrant is out there. All the draft warrants are out there, so now for people, you have any discussion on, on twenty, well, twenty isn't twenty anymore, it's.
Oh, because people are looking at old information.
Eighteen or something. Tell them you're not on draft using.
Exactly. Pulling off the website, the drafts.
Yeah.
So they're no longer there.
Steve Byrne has to renumber all his branches.
You gotta renumber all, Steve.
I'm not redoing this. Yeah.
But what?
You guys don't use this to review it.
It's trippy.
I, I, I literally would have to see what that is. I don't know what.
It's the list of all the articles and the dollar amounts and where they're funded from.
We have so many different comments. There's so many different documents that come in over such a period of time.
I am using that.
You almost intend. So sometimes we get a better.
Could have many trees.
Always kill.
Cut all the trees.
Trees.
I saw one happen.
Hey, girl, I could even return this.
You did do well. Can I do the hot pants?
Make an idea of that.
Jerd out.
All right, motion two.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I would second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries by unanimous action.